Okay, welcome to Watsonville. Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order of November 4th, 2025, of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. Will the clerk please call roll call?
Member De Serafa.
I'm present.
Cummings.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
And Koenig.
Next, we'll have a moment of silence. If any board member would like to join us in a moment of silence.
I found out last night that Aptos resident Dale Berman has unfortunately passed away last weekend. Dale was a builder, had good advice for our planning department, which he passed on to me. He's a father, a wonderful husband, and helped to help me to create many, many projects on our school campuses that benefited children and families for many years. So Dale, I'm sorry you're gone. And to anybody out there who's not feeling well, please get yourself to the doctor. Don't ignore symptoms. Thank you.
Anyone else? I do have someone. We have Manuel Bersamin that has passed away at 67. He was a former council member, mayor here in Watsonville. You still see his photo up in the front. He was actually mayor in 2000. I think he came in in 2002. He had appointed me as his planning commissioner prior to my library commission. And he was going to retire from the council. And I got appointed to the city council that way through Manuel Bersamin. But his passing happened this last weekend. He dedicated his life to public service. He was a Cabrillo College trustee at the moment and also worked at the Trio in Hartnell College. Please join me in the moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask the CEO if there's any late additions to the agenda or additions or deletions to the consent or regular agendas.
Yes, Chair. We have additional materials for Agenda Item 9 on the regular agenda. We have our revised staff report, which is packet page 30. It has been replaced with, under the discussion in Paragraph 6, Bullet Point 2 should read, "The City of Watsonville will contribute $100,000 to be approved at the November 18th council meeting." And also, under discussion, Paragraph 7 should read, "This results in total contributions of $1,050,000", leaving a gap of $250,000.
Recording in progress.
And that's all we have.
Thank you. So are we online now?
Chair, we are continuing to attempt to address multiple issues with the technology, including audio and visual.
Okay. We'll move on to item number four. See if any board members would like to remove any items from the consent to regular.
Yes, Chair. I have two items I'd like to pull. The first is item number 31, the appointment to CSAC. And the second is item 39, the multi-year contract with Community Foundation for $900,000 for the opioid settlement funds.
31 and 39? So 31 will now be 10, 10.1. And 39, 10.2. Whoa, I got an echo. Now we'll move on to public comment. This is a, wow, sounds like the, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us regarding items that are not on the agenda, items on consent agenda, or if you'd like to speak to us regarding an item on regular agenda. Please note that you will not be able to speak to it a second time when that item is heard. Speakers will be given two minutes. Please follow line and approach the podium to speak.
Chair, if I may, I'm so sorry. Before we begin public comment, we're continuing to address technical difficulties and are working to resolve those to be able to facilitate public comment. Can we please take a couple moment recess to hopefully get the public comment feature functional?
Check, 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 check. Sorry for that, everyone making the public comment. We'd like to see everyone that makes public comment to make it visible and public to everybody seen online or on television.
Okay. Chair, we're ready.
Okay. We'll now move on to public comment. Sorry about the technical difficulties here.
Am I on? My name is Nina Audino. I'm speaking to the county's pattern of apparent disregard for public input on the drafting of the new land use ordinance regulating best facilities using flammable and explosive lithium ion batteries. Supervisor Hernandez's town hall on October 27th was scheduled for one and a half hours between 5:30 and 7:00 p.m. It started over 10 minutes late. Following the introduction, the first presenter lead ordinance planner, Stephanie Hanson, started her presentation at 5:48. The window for public comment opened a few minutes after 7:00 p.m. after the planned end of the meeting. Due to lack of time, the public was limited to two minutes each at a town hall, meant by definition to solicit and respect public commentary and input. Two representatives of 3CE, Dos Williams and Sofia Schritzke, spent over four minutes of the time allotted to the public representing 3CE's interests. Williams went overtime and had to have the mic pulled away from him by the moderator, Dennis Webb. At least five people at the end of the public line were directed to sit down without being heard because they needed to lock up. After one of these people called out loudly discrimination, the optics of the situation prompted Mr. Ramon Gomez to allow the last member of the public, a Hispanic high school age girl, to speak. More than half an hour later, nothing had been locked up. The room was still open, and Supervisor Hernandez was getting interviewed by Michael Rosales of KSBDW8. The video of the town hall for public viewing stops directly short of public comment. It isn't provided, no public comment was recorded. We're not sure for either the county's or public's future reference. Perhaps this is simply an oversight. In that case, please repost the video with public comment included. The video has been posted on the county YouTube site with 503 followers and a county of 263,000. The video has been viewed 77 times because it's not visible to the general public. The video was also posted on Hernandez's Facebook page with a following of 4,400 three days after the event. Many people, as we all know, do not use Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Gregory Audino. I'm going to continue. The video has not been posted on the official County of Santa Cruz Facebook page or added to the county's major projects applications website page, where the proposed best ordinance and the 90 Minto Road best application information lives. The town hall was noticed once in one newspaper only by the county on page eight of the Paheronian on October 3rd in a three-sentence statement. Then it was noticed on the official County of Santa Cruz Facebook page and Supervisor Hernandez's Vote for Hernandez Facebook page 10 days prior. Many people do not use Facebook. To date, the county's major projects applications website page does not feature any invitation for public input, such as the one on Solano County's best project page, which reads, "Public input is key. Email comments to energystorage@solanocounty.com." Elevator access was locked at 5:15 on the evening of the town hall. There was no signage at all explaining how to get up to the fourth floor of the building to the community room and not the city council chambers. It, as was advertised, and many members of the public arrived late after spending significant time trying to figure out access. Folks, we all live here locally. We're all locals. We all live in this county. It's not a coincidence that Moss Landing burned at 3:00 p.m. That was at peak loading time. Even in the middle of winter on a sunny day, those batteries were full. And one cell, about the size of a Red Bull can, went and caused that. And they're still using those systems and the batteries proposed for here.
Good morning. My name is Robert Haberleve from SoCal. And I'm here to support Item 27 on the consent agenda, the resolution to support and defend the U.S. Constitution. I support this resolution because I believe it is time for local governments to take a public stand against the unlawful and unconstitutional actions of the federal government. I'm also very concerned about the consolidation of power, the vast power of the federal government into the hands of a single individual, the transformation of ICE agents into thugs, and the chilling deployment of armed military personnel into the streets of our cities. These actions are un-American. And if left unchecked, will lead to the collapse of our democracy, the creation of a police state, and the beginning of authoritarian rule. I realize that some may view this resolution through a partisan lens. But this is not about politics. It is about protecting our rights, defending the Constitution, and advocating for the bedrock principle of our democracy, the separation of powers. I believe this is something that all Americans, including those living here in Santa Cruz County, can support. Since all great movements in U.S. history began with activism at the local level, I urge the Board of Supervisors to unanimously adopt this resolution. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Hello. My name is Maria Marsilio. And I'm here to encourage the county to not put additional property taxes on the residents for mosquito and vector control. You're talking about affordable housing. Well, prices have gone up. Property insurance and everything else, it's difficult to live in Santa Cruz County. Would like to hang on to the house that I have as well as everyone else. So adding additional property taxes to an already burdened community is a problem. Our wages aren't as high. Some of us are living on fixed income. And it's a difficult place to live. So I encourage you not to put the additional taxes for mosquito and vector control because getting extra money from all the new housing that's going up, there's a lot and abundance of that. And cost of housing has gone up. Where is this money going? Please, please do not burden us anymore with any more taxes.
Good morning. My name is Becky Steinbruner. And I want to support what was stated to you this morning by Nina and Greg Audino. I wrote you basically the same thing immediately after the October 27th town hall meeting or public meeting about the battery ordinance. We were told that this was not about the New Leaf project. And yet, the New Leaf project developer, Max Christian, was given almost 20 minutes to talk uninterrupted about the project. It wasn't fair. And it should be stricken from the record as any semblance of a public meeting for the ordinance. I also want to hand to you the draft county of Solano County best ordinance. They are voting on that today or reviewing it today. I'm going to leave this with you for the record. But I have forwarded it to many of you and in correspondence. There will be a public meeting convened by the public November 10th in Simpkins Center, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I urge you all to attend. The notable thing about the Solano County process is they involved a technical advisory group that the public here has been begging you to do for months, and you have not. Solano's group includes members of the public, hazmat, ag, many specialists that have helped them write this excellent 21-page document. In converse, ours is a seven-page document that talks about ag land. This is unacceptable. I want to now move to an excellent document. Well, let me go to your conversation about Measure Q and Freedom Lake. Thank you Supervisor Koenig for your comment. And I just want to also leave with a record what has been done there before and question the use of $700,000 of Measure Q. Lastly, I want to leave you an excellent document that will be coming to you from the Historic Resources Commission. I'll leave you with recommendations. Please reach out to your Historic Resource Commissioners.
My name's Trevor Hattisid, from Santa Cruz County. I run a workforce reentry program in Santa Cruz County that helps reduce sevitism and also increase community volunteerism out of the downtown Veterans Building in Santa Cruz. And I also help with several food pantries. In this area, I helped the Watsonville Food Pantry, the Veteran Food Pantry, open, did it within three hours. And I just wanted to talk to you guys real quick about addressing the food stamp issue. I did an early assessment on Sunday at Holy Cross, which is a pantry I helped out at for about four years. And it looks like Santa Cruz County is going to be only seeing a slight increase. And then, but I hear from the Watsonville community that there's a greater increase. And it's probably food stamp percentages. If there's more people here that are on food stamps, then it's probably going to be a bigger issue here. But I wanted to lend my advice, services, whatever I can do. I can help open up another food pantry in this area if it's needed. I know Second Harvest is now open to the community for distribution, which is great. It'll help alleviate any issues. But if we need to maybe extend the hours at the Veterans Building for community members, not just veterans, something like that, maybe we can make an agreement with the people that are organizing and running the building. I work with a lot of people on the Veterans Council. So yeah, all ears and ready to help and have a lot of community support to be able to do it. Justin's got my cellphone number. You know, get out there, play soccer every once in a while. Although I can't.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name's Elizabeth Burden. I'm the Managing Director of Holistic Defense for the Public Defender's Office. I'm here today to speak in support of line item 29 on the consent agenda, Jaime Longoria's appointment to the Latino Affairs Commission. Jaime joined our office in May of 2023 as an experienced felony attorney and has quickly become an invaluable member of our team. He brings not only exceptional legal skill but also a deep personal commitment to equity, justice, and community service. As a first-generation Mexican-American and the first in his family to finish high school, Jaime embodies the values of perseverance and representation that this commission seeks to uplift. He holds a degree in criminal justice, law, and a Master of Laws in Trial Advocacy. And his career has been defined by service. First as a United States Marine and now as a local public defender. Before coming to Santa Cruz County, Jaime represented thousands of indigent clients in San Francisco, completing over 20 jury trials and working extensively in collaborative courts such as Veterans Justice Court, Drug Court, and Community Justice Court. His experience navigating these systems gives him a unique understanding of the social and structural challenges facing many Latino community members here in Santa Cruz County. Jaime is also a disabled veteran and an active member of the Santa Cruz County Emergency Response Team, CERT. He is deeply rooted in this community as a father and neighbor and a public servant and brings both lived experience and professional expertise to the table. Our office is confident that Jaime will serve this commission with integrity, compassion, and insight. And we strongly support this appointment. Thank you so much for your time.
Good morning. Adriana Mata, Chief Community Impact Officer for Second Harvest Food Bank. I just wanted to be here and provide some information regarding the impacts of the CalFresh hole that had been happening over the last week. As you all know, our community is in fear. They're afraid. We, just to give you an idea, we're going to talk a little bit about what we've seen. The last week, we had over 150 calls come through our community hotline, which included families asking about where they can find food, what the process was like, what sort of documentation we're asking for. And also, because they've never, either one, they've never actually gone to a food distribution or they don't know how to obtain the resources that they're going to need. Also, just so that you have an idea, we've already established some community, emergency community distributions. We're going to be hosting two for, in support of HSA, Thursday and Friday. We are also conducting an emergency community for distribution that's going to be happening at the fairgrounds and increasing our partner distributions as well. We have schools calling. We have community members calling. We have everybody asking for support. And we've just been greatly impacted by everything that's going on. Thank you for consideration, providing a resource because at this moment, we need volunteers for every shift, if it's packing, if it's community distributions, if it's actually just taking calls, coming to our office and supporting some of the staff. We have our staff working overtime to be able to support the need, which includes everything from warehouse to being out of the community to answering calls. Over the last week, just to give you an idea, we've also provided gift cards. These gift cards are for families that are going to need a source of protein. And we were able to provide over $10,000 worth of gift cards to our community members because the need is great. Families don't know what they're going to have to prioritize, if they're going to have to prioritize their rent or their food for this month.
Hi, I'm Marian, the Chief People and Culture Officer at Second Harvest Food Bank. Just to echo what Adriana said, my team runs our emergency community food hotline. In September, we were averaging around 50 calls a week. Last week, we had over 160. And that's not counting the number of people walking into our doors we had to bring in bilingual volunteers to help us with the overwhelm of people seeking food assistance, many of whom have never gone to a community food distribution, have never needed a food pantry. There's a lot of fear and anxiety in our community. So I just want to echo the thanks for centering this, that a lot of people are really struggling, that they don't know where to turn. And we can use bilingual volunteers to help us pack the food, to distribute it, and to help answer the many questions that our community members have about why this is happening. So thank you so much.
Is there anyone online that would like to address us?
Carol, your microphone's now available.
Good morning. My name is Carol Bjorn. I'm here to ask that the county approve a best ordinance similar to the one being considered by the Solano County. I sent a copy of the Solano County Best Proposed Ordinance to you on Tuesday, October 28, 2025, at 8:24 a.m. via email. Why is the county, New Leaf, and 3CE excluding and suppressing valid and legitimate public comments from not only publicly speaking about the best ordinance, but also excluding valid and legitimate public comments from the record? Chris Damhorse blatantly excluded public comment from the written report from the Commission on the Environment. He also failed to even mention the valid and legitimate public comments when he spoke for 20 minutes last week at the supposed town hall hosted by you, Felipe Hernandez. And I call it a supposed town hall because only the interested and conflicted parties, i.e. those who may benefit from one outcome, were presenting their side. A town hall is a meeting where everyone gets to speak an equal amount of time. One side is not given the floor for an hour and a half while the public comments are pushed to the end when there's no more time. Another very similar blatant example of excluding valid and legitimate public comment occurred at the Watsonville City Council meeting on Tuesday, September 23rd, when Mayor Maria Orozco, who also works for you, Felipe, excluded public comment in response to New Leaf's presentation. Not only have these valid and legitimate comments been excluded, but you guys have not been publicly noticing the good people of Watsonville and the good people of this county. They're paying your salary and you're betraying them. You need to be mailing them notifications in English and Spanish of all these meetings. Did New Leaf properly notify everybody when they had their initial meeting, when they started their application process? I think not. And also, just want to ask, you guys need to start this whole process all over, properly notify everybody in the county of what's going on in both Spanish and English.
Lowell, your microphone's now available.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Oh, thank you. Lowell Hurst here. You know, I am a resident of Watsonville, but I do live in the unique Second District, supervisory district. And so I want to, you know, remind all the supervisors to pay attention to South County in whatever way you can. It's an important part of the community. And we have our own unique and special challenges that sometimes need some extra, some extra help. So I just wanted to commend the supervisors for their focus and their good work. And I want to thank staff, particularly Carlos Palacios, who's done a tremendous job with the county. And I want to wish Nicole the very best luck in the future. Got a long, bright history and a, you know, long, bright future ahead of us. So my message today, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. You know, my retirement is so, so nice that sometimes I just don't feel like leaving the house. But I'm still engaged with the civic affairs and I want to see the best for all our community. I just say, please remember South County and their unique needs. And thank you for all your work. That's good for me.
Heather, your microphone's now available.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for taking my, my comment. While I support and appreciate item number nine, the declaration of the local emergency due to food insecurity from the federal government, I ask you to please consider the expansion of those recommendations, to please consider the nutritional needs that food banks often provide are really often carb-heavy and difficult for diabetics, cultural, our cultural food needs for different communities, the fear of going to food banks because of National Guard slash ICE involvement, thanks to our governor's proclamation of including them in our food bank distributions, mobility issues for people waiting in long lines, gas costs for people waiting in long lines, distribution sites often not having timeframes for working people. I noticed two of the newer distributions are happening within this week. Both happen at times when most people are at work. I call on you to look at other opportunities for expanding that funding out, especially now that half of the funding has been committed to this month, at least. now that half of the funding has been committed to this month, at least. Knowing that it'll take a while to ramp up and get out there, I advise you to look at other solutions, like partnering with local food bank, or farmers' markets that have snap flexibility, because they're exempt from the various... Sorry, the little red screen just popped up and I lost my train of thought. But anyways, yes, I'm hoping that you can break that $500,000 down and re-appropriate it to some things like Meals on Wheels, and Grey Bears, and the farmers' markets, to make sure that there's a wider swath of community that is receiving the funding. Thank you so much.
Carol R., your microphone is now available.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Carol Reader. I was also at the town hall meeting, and I do concur with Mrs. Adino's and Ms. John's comments. There were severe restraints on the public's input, and it almost appears strategic in a way that would seem there is a plan to make the ordinance move forward in a way that the public was not in any way opposed to it. I think that needs to be corrected. I'm not sure how you go back and correct that kind of thing, except have additional town hall meetings. The one thing that stood out to me is that many of us presented the cards with our questions on them, and only very few of those were forwarded and addressed by the panel. And I'm sure there were many more good questions besides my four that weren't even brought up. And so, it just seemed like there was a very weak exchange between the public and the panel, as well as a very poor plan for allowing the public to speak out, because the panelists seemed to wind up in the line to be making the comments at the end. I don't know how you address this, but I think it needs to be forwarded and thought about and corrected. Thank you.
Call-in user two, your microphone's now available.
Marilyn Garrett. So, at your next meeting, you have this item about the ordinance on battery storage. My question to you, are you planning a battery fire for our neighborhoods? Mandated fire and toxicity should you approve moving forward? And this is based on facts you've been provided on the hazards. I have before me a document titled "Alarming Truths: The Hazards of Current Battery Energy Storage Systems." And here's just one section, deadly forever chemicals in lithium ion batteries. PFAS, internationally recognized dangerous toxins that are now prohibited and highly regulated worldwide, are released during manufacturing, use, and disposal of lithium ion batteries. This source is from the dirty side of green energy, lithium ion batteries, as a source of PFAS in the environment from Research Square, July 2023. An earlier speaker talked about authoritarian rule that we are experiencing from the White House and down. This is authoritarian rule by these corporations who are writing these so-called ordinances and forcing this toxicity of the public. And you are supposed to represent the public well-being. This should be stopped, like medical researchers urge, stop the lithium ion battery energy storage systems. Represent our well-being, not corporate.
Thank you.
BEST interests. Thank you.
Alex, your microphone's now available. Chair, I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Call-in user 153. Call-in user 153. We can hear you. Thank you.
Hello? Good morning. Can you hear me?
Please continue.
Not sure if you can hear me. My name is Suzie O'Hara, and I serve as a Santa Cruz City Council member representing District 5. I appreciate the time to comment on item 39 during public comment, as I'm unable to join the meeting later this morning. I support Supervisor Conick to delay item 39 so that the county and city can work collaboratively on a more strategic approach to using our opioid settlement funds. Supervisor Conick and I are in the early stages of engaging on this issue together, and I appreciate the chance to share a few thoughts. Before serving on council, I was a program manager for the Bobley Community Partnership for Accountability, Connection, and Treatment, known as PACT, or the Downtown Accountability Program. PACT brought together the court, DA, public defenders, law enforcement, and behavioral health, and service providers to connect individuals struggling with addiction to real treatment options while maintaining accountability and public safety. It worked because it was coordinated and person-centered. PACT resulted in an 80% reduction of citations and arrests for our clients, and transformed many lives across Santa Cruz County. Last month, Supervisor Conick and I attended a regional meeting at San Jose City Hall hosted by Mayor Mahan and Stanford professor Dr. Keith Humphreys, a former Obama White House policy advisor and one of the country's leading voices on addiction policy. Dr. Humphreys emphasized that our current fragmented system fails both those suffering from addiction and communities affected by its impacts, and the most promising solutions are PACT-like models that combine treatment, accountability, and sustained case management. With Prop 46 now reshaping how we handle repeat drug offenses, this is exactly the right time to pause, design a coordinated framework, and invest our settlement funds in unrestricted treatment access and navigation support for people facing abuse, substance use, and justice. Respectfully urge you to support delaying this item so we can work together on relaunching a modern... No, thank you very much.
Call-in user 002.
Yeah, hello. I'm not sure how well I can be heard. This is James Hewing-Witten. The computer stuff leaves something to be desired. I still don't know if I can be heard. Can I be heard?
Yes, please continue.
I'm not so sure. My time hasn't started yet. Okay, I can hear it on the Facebook. So, here we have an election going on today. I hope everybody has read the beguiling, different things on the events and what's supposed to be passed. I don't know how much time I have left. It says 1:45. A woman named Jo Hyman wrote a book in 1977 called "The Metrocrats." Regionalism and non-law governments are destroying the United States. Couple weeks ago in Santa Cruz, we had a second, no kings. Isn't that why, 1776, we removed ourselves from our connection with Britain supposedly? So, on the back page of the book, "Metrocrats," about the author. For more than 15 years, Jo Hyman has been known as an unyielding opponent to the alien ideas that have been turning the self-government of Americans into a grotesque replica of old-worlds divided rights and rulers. How does that fit in? Any charter city or county is controlled by a city or county manager. They're part of the Rockefeller, Stanford, Carnegie syndicate of 1313. So, what I'm suggesting is that there's not a whole lot of clarity as far as what's going on. I believe that the people that were elected had good intentions for what they're doing, but if they're controlled by an unelected, internationally-controlled city or county manager, are the people really being served in a constitutional republic? There's nowhere in our Constitution or Declaration of Independence with just anything positive about a democracy. And we can thank very big, giant characters such as Zach Fred.
Alex, your microphone's now available.
All right. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Alex Miller, a resident of Aptos. This spring and summer, New Leaf Energy Project Manager Max Christensen described our need for battery electric storage using what CAEZO calls the duck curve, a four-hour period where people come home and, you know, prepare dinner and things like that, but the sun isn't shining, and so the batteries need to supplement what's available on the grid. But California expects rapid EV adoption, and in fact, they expect the electric demand from EVs to double our need by 2045. And this creates a different type of a curve, a camelback curve, in which we have a peak in the early evening and a later peak when people plug in their EVs to charge. The four-hour duration of lithium batteries cannot meet this new demand. We need long-duration energy storage, for example, the vanadium flow batteries. Unfortunately, our county workshops on BEST have been a single-vendor show. I urge the county to solicit and amend the BEST ordinance to include vendors who will use non-flammable, long-duration battery technology. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring you back to the board for any comments. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you. Good morning, everybody. It's nice to see all of you this morning. I only have comments on one item on today's consent agenda, and that is item number 52, to adopt a resolution accepting unanticipated revenue in the amount of $100,000 in the Department of Parks from a transfer of funds from the CDI to provide litter abatement services in North Coast locations through the end of the fiscal year. So, I want to start off just by thanking both Parks and CDI for working together to plan to address litter abatement in the absence of the Downtown Streets Team contract. The plan, so folks are aware, is that Parks Maintenance is going to pick up the work on the North Coast, and for CDI road crews to add monthly street sweeping to downtown Felton. But in terms of the Downtown Street Team's overall impact that was planned for this year, the report doesn't mention cleanups at Covered Bridge Park in Felton and downtown Boulder Creek. It's my understanding that the Parks Crew will pick up the litter abatement at the Covered Bridge Park, but that leaves me wondering a little bit about downtown Boulder Creek, and I'm wondering if Director Machado could come up and just answer a really quick question that I have on this item. Is there a plan within CDI to address litter abatement in Boulder Creek, basically to address the gap that's created without the Downtown Streets Team?
Yes. Good morning, board members. Appreciate the question. Matt Machado, Director of CDI. So, to answer your question with regard to Boulder Creek, you'll probably recall that we did a pilot study there to address the litter abatement, and we implemented that for about 18 months, and on a monthly basis, we were collecting a little less than one garbage can per month. And so, we recognize that there may not be a litter issue, per se. But that said, our plan going forward in the future, and we're trying to develop this for our next budget cycle, is to adopt or develop a county-wide program where we harness volunteers, and we coordinate that as the lead to address those ongoing litter abatement needs countywide, not just Boulder Creek. And so, we plan to roll Boulder Creek into a more county-wide approach, knowing that a specific program is probably not warranted just for Boulder Creek, considering the 18 months of minimal trash pickup and, you know, considerable cost to do that. So, we're trying to develop a comprehensive program that addresses all the needs of the county for litter abatement. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. It does answer my question, and I appreciate you looking at it from a more comprehensive approach. I look forward to hearing back on how that's going, how that planning's going, and to ensure that the various villages in the San Lorenzo Valley are included in that. So, thank you for the answer.
Thank you.
And then, my final comment is just appreciation for the team. I know you're struggling with the audio and visual today. Thank you to the audience and the community for your patience. It's always stressful when you have technology challenges, but I really appreciate the team rolling with that, and appreciate your patience as we navigate it for the rest of the day.
Supervisor Cummins?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask the CEO just to make a brief comment on kind of the next steps in the process with the... Because we had a lot of people commenting on battery energy storage items going to be coming to the board. I'm just wondering if you can speak to it. Also, in particular, you know, I think we also want to make it clear to the public, we haven't actually, you know, decided as a board if we want to have a local ordinance or go through the state process. I'm just wondering if you can just briefly speak to kind of what the next steps we're anticipating, just so that it's clear for the many members of the public who are concerned with this item.
Yeah, happy to speak to this item. So, we're in the process of taking a variety of steps right now. The ordinance under consideration will be posted early. It's scheduled to come to the board for consideration at our November 18 meeting, and we're planning to post this agenda item by the end of this week, so that the public has enough time to review and provide comments on this item. We realize that it's received a lot of attention. I also want to note, we're in the process of establishing a county webpage that is going to have information on the proposed ordinance. It will include the video from the meeting. While the meeting was not an official meeting of the county, other than the fact that it was a town hall that Supervisor Hernandez held, we will be posting the entire video on the webpage along with other information. We are also compiling all the questions. We received 75 questions at the town hall that the public attended, so we've been taking in all those questions to summarize and produce a frequently asked question material that will be on the webpage as well, along with other information. We plan to post a link or post the actual item that the board is going to be reviewing on the November 18 meeting, and our county PIO will be notifying the media and the public later this week. And um our county PIO will be notifying the media and the public later this week via press release of all of this information. So hopefully this will provide an additional ability for the public to um provide the board with information ahead of November 18th.
Thank you so much. Um, so item number 27, I just want to thank Supervisor Conig for joining me and putting this item. And I want to thank the public for bringing this item to our attention. This is support and defend the U.S. Constitution, civil rights, and separation of powers. As, you know, people who've taken um an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And as we're seeing many constitutional rights be taken away from people with ICE being deployed to neighborhoods without there being any due process and people being taken and forced into vehicles, forced into detention with, you know, no contact with family and no ability to exercise their constitutional rights. It's really critical that local leaders are stepping up and saying that this isn't appropriate and making sure that the people of our community know that we are dedicated to preserving their constitutional rights, their freedoms, and their civil rights that have been fought for by the many people um who've fought for this country. And so I really think it's critical at this point in time that we're taking this stance. And I hope that other jurisdictions will join us in taking this stance to push back against the federal efforts to undermine the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of all of our states across the United States. So thank you for your support on that. And um, and then item number 52, litter abatement. I want to thank um Community Development Infrastructure and Parks Department again for being able to come up with a creative solution to this issue that was really that, that uh, you know, caught us by surprise as we've been caught by many of these other surprises that unfold every single day. But losing the Downtown Streets Team and all their amazing efforts and work that they do to keep our North Coast beaches clean was, you know, very concerning to our office and to many of the people who live in those communities. So I'm glad to see that we have a temporary fix and can look forward to continuing to work with you all on how we can have a more permanent fix moving forward. And I guess one thing I would add is if there's any opportunity to collect data on the amount of litter that's being picked up, because we do, the board did, you know, directly move forward with a coastal development permit to have nighttime beach closures to help address some of the litter issues. I think it'd be really helpful to be able to see, you know, what are the litter abatement issues prior to that and afterwards to see if the change in the timing of parking on the North Coast actually have an impact on reducing litter. So thank you all, and uh, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Conig?
Thank you, Chair. On item 27, I also wanted to thank Supervisor Cummings for his work in partnership on this resolution to support and defend the U.S. Constitution and for committee members for bringing it to our attention. I think this is really a good way to address this issue. And it's, it will demonstrate us standing shoulder to shoulder with other jurisdictions like the City of Boston and Philadelphia, who have also passed similar resolutions. I, I think the gentleman from SoCal made an excellent point. This is not meant to be a partisan resolution. In fact, we don't say Democrat or Republican anywhere in this resolution. This is not about partisanship. It's about our constitution and the foundational documents for our democracy. The acts that we've seen this administration take are truly shocking. They've exceeded their constitutional authority by attempting to revoke birthright citizenship, close agencies without congressional consent, impose unauthorized tariffs. They've threatened the freedom of speech by withholding funds from and attempting institution-wide censorship of everything from California's world-renowned educational, healthcare, and scientific institutions, and using the regulatory power of the Federal Communications Commission to silence critics. They're holding people without access to counsel. This, this is absolutely insane. And we cannot, as, as elected officials who took an oath to defend and support the Constitution, we cannot sit idly by while this administration tramples on our Constitution. So thank you all for all for joining us in passing this resolution.
Thank you.
On, on a more regional note, just on item 49, the, the speed bumps on Dover Drive, I just want to thank uh Public Works and particularly Tim Nguyen, who's done a great job getting our speed bump program back up up to speed, although, you know, safely reducing speeds through that work. And these speed bumps on Dover Drive will really help to reduce cut-through traffic. When SoCal Drive backs up, folks have been cutting through the neighborhood there for a long time. And I think these are really going to help improve safety there. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor DeSerpah?
Thank you. Uh, I want to also thank our roads crew, Steve Wiesner and Tim Nguyen for uh always uh being willing to help out when we have traffic and safety issues. Yesterday, we met in Rio del Mar on a corner that is a very, a serious traffic situation. And I really appreciated their help with our constituents and our public. So thank you very much to our roads crew. Um, under consent, item 34, thank you to the scheduling, for not scheduling board meetings on Yom Kippur this year. There was a board meeting that day and not, I don't think for this agency, but for another. And um, and I missed being able to go to the temple. So I really appreciate the attention to that detail. Under public safety, items 35, Elder Abuse Program. Thank you to the DA for applying for that. I'm, will be, and my district will be holding scam and fraud program for seniors in our community soon. And so I really appreciate the district attorney pursuing all monies available to help our community. Item 36, the $270,000 grant that we're applying for, for Violence Against Women Prosecution Program. Appreciate again that that particular pot of money will pay for an advocate and part of a DA to prosecute those crimes. Thank you very much to our DA for that. Item 38, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant for $205,000 for the public defender to replace their case management system. Really important in terms of tracking outcomes and helping people. So thank you very much for going after that pot of money. And I'll hold my, the remainder of my comments for item 39 when it comes before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would I like to bring back the board to entertain a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'm with consent.
A second?
Items um
39 and 29?
39 and, yes.
We have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor DeSerpah. Madam Clerk, if we could take a roll call?
Supervisor Conig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
DeSerpah?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to the regular agenda. I do want to note that we do have an item for 10:45. Uh, this clock is not right, by the way. But we do have an item for 10:45. Hold on, move on. To number seven, presentation from the Save the Waves Coalition on the climate vulnerability of California Natural Surfing Capital Report. I'll turn it over to Sean Burns, Reserves Network Coordinator, and Estella Bonner, Executive Director of Black Surf Santa Cruz County, for the presentation.
I think we have a one-minute video to open up on, if it's able to play today.
The Waves and our local partners just launched a first-of-its-kind study supported by the Ocean Protection Council to paint a really detailed picture of the surf economy in Santa Cruz. We have a much better understanding now of the economics of surfing in Santa Cruz. But more importantly, we have a blueprint for how to bring this statewide. Surf ecosystems need to be embedded in the policy process. And if they don't have status, if they're not recognized, we are losing out on the natural capital that we have.
Thank you. And again, appreciation to the audio and visual team today. I know it's always a tricky task to deal with. So um, thank you for showing the one-minute video. And we also have PowerPoint to display as well with some slides. I can start getting into it a little bit, but um, yeah. Just, I guess I rely a little bit on the slides. I don't remember exactly what I'm going to say, but I can start. Oh, here we go. It looks like popping up. But yeah, just want to say thank you to the board very much for the time to present this study. Yeah, my name is Sean Burns. I'm born and raised here in Santa Cruz. I've been working with Save the Waves for the last four years as the Reserves Network Coordinator. I work with the Santa Cruz World Surfing Reserve. Save the Waves is a nonprofit, has 13 world surfing reserves all around the world. The last two years, we've been working on this project specifically here in Santa Cruz, studying the surfonomics, climate vulnerability of the surf breaks here in Santa Cruz. So thank you very much for hearing from us today. Thank you to our partners, Partners Black Surf Santa Cruz and Integral Consulting, who are here and going to comment as well on this project. Thank you to the City of Santa Cruz, who also helped support this project. It was ultimately a grant by the Ocean Protection Council. So it's great to see some state buy-in to looking more into surf breaks. And if we can go to the next slide, please. So yeah, a little bit of background on why surfing. And so these numbers that you can see on the screen are from a, thank you very much, are from a project pre-COVID. So you can see worldwide about 35 million surfers. If you're a surfer, you definitely know that's gone up. Surf spots are a little bit more crowded these days, but it's a good thing because I think surfing, you know, is such a unique and awesome sport and very special here at Santa Cruz. And when you start looking at the numbers of surfonomics, which is what this project was, when you look at international surf tourism expenditures, you're looking close to $65 billion, which is a lot of money. And so we did a deeper dive into Santa Cruz and what the surfonomic numbers here are in town. A little bit more background on why surfing, it's the state sport of California. There's over 300 surf breaks in California. And here in Santa Cruz especially, it dates back to 1885. It started surfing. It was the first documented surf session here in Santa Cruz at the Rivermouth. Go next. Okay. So a little bit about this project. It started, it was here in the World Surfing Reserve. You can see from this map, we designated three areas. So the west side, midtown, and east side. It was 31 surf breaks that we assessed. And so it's pretty unique to Santa Cruz that there's 31 surf spots just in that mile coastline. And when you look at the countywide of about 29 miles, there's over 60 surf breaks in Santa Cruz County. And then I just mentioned, there's just about over 300 surf breaks in California. So very unique coastline we have here that's truly valuable economically and culturally, as we're going to get into. So a little bit of the project overviews. One, we wanted to quantify the Santa Cruz surf economy, as you saw in the video. 194.7 million brought in economics just through surfing in Santa Cruz. We wanted to assess the vulnerability, so looking at the surfability of times that we're going to get into a little bit here with sea level rise and how the surfability is actually diminishing. Also wanted to better understand, you know, the economic barriers of surfing and make sure we're hearing from the entire surf community here in Santa Cruz. And then the reason I'm here today is we wanted to help guide, you know, coastal policy and speak to you all about putting this in and prioritizing surf breaks in the coastal planning. So a little bit on the Santa Cruz surfing economy. As you saw in the video, 783,000 surf visits to Santa Cruz per year. So there's a lot of people coming here for surfing, but also coming here just for the beaches and coastline and the ocean. We have a very unique ocean here. It's a thriving ecosystem that's very healthy. I'm sure you've all gotten in the water and just felt how rewarding and refreshing it can be here. We're very lucky to have a thriving ocean here, but as well as world-class waves. And so then, yeah, you look at the surf trips by visitors, 44.5 million annually, and then 150.2 million each year, kind of in the broader region around surf lessons and people spending on surf gear. In Santa Cruz, $194.7 million per year, just off surfing in Santa Cruz, showing the economic value that we have here with our surf breaks. The bottom right corner we'll get into is kind of what potentially, you know, when that surfability with sea level rise and erosion and how surf breaks are changing going into the future, potentially what we're losing out on economically through surfing. And so, yeah, the present-day surfability, this is one of my favorite aspects of this project. It really kind of grounded us in authenticity and, and we worked with local surf condition experts. So people that have been surfing these surf breaks for 30-plus years, people like Frosty, you know, and Chasing Mavericks, he kind of gave us his input on what the ideal tide was. And so we're able to come up with that surfability for the most ideal tide for each one of these surf breaks. They're all so unique. People like Peter Mel, Tyler Fox, Sean Dollar, all gave their input on the ideal tides to come up with that surfability. And then I'm going to pass it to Bella from Black Surf Santa Cruz to also talk about the important work we did with BIPOC focus groups.
Thank you. So as a part of this project, Black Surf Santa Cruz hosted a series of focus groups to better understand the socioeconomic and cultural barriers to surfing that we see with our constituents. And some of the variables we were looking to learn a little bit more about are some of the barriers, including social exclusion, feelings of psychological safety and belonging. So who does and doesn't feel like they feel safe or like they belong out in the ocean? Economic barriers, physical accessibility issues, as well as community representation or lack thereof. And so some of the barriers that came out of the focus groups, we hosted two sessions with just over 10 participants, included feelings of social exclusion. So that includes localism, territorialism, and profiling in the water that reduces participation. Economic barriers, so high costs limit access for Black and BIPOC communities or historically excluded groups. That can include cost of living in Santa Cruz, cost to rent gear, cost to maintain gear, transportation costs and the like. Physical accessibility, so limited transportation, bus routes to the beach, parking, paid or free, wheelchair access. We've seen some of those Moba mats be implemented, shout out county parks over there, as well as representation. So we see that in permitting, who is and who isn't able to teach surf lessons, other various aquatic programming limits to representation as well. And that contributes to who, again, feels like they belong in these spaces. Some of the environmental justice and equality and policy pieces. So we asked focus group participants to talk a little bit more about what would help increase their participation to surfing. And one of the biggest through-line themes continues to be feelings of cultural and psychological safety. So barriers continue to persist without trauma-informed programs or visible representation in the lineup. High costs and limited affordability, reinforced exclusion in the sport of surfing, and transportation, so lack of transit solutions continue to contribute to restricted equitable ocean access over time. And I will pass it to Dave.
Good morning, supervisors. David Revel with Integral Consulting. He's helping in some of the technical aspects of this. So I'm not going to read all these numbers, but Sean talked about the surfability, which is really the number of hours, of daylight hours that all of these breaks are surfable. And um, the more surfable ones, Steamer Lane, Pleasure Point, for example, have a lot higher use. An example in the report, they're color-coded, green is good, has greater than 50% chance of being surfable during any daylight hour in the, in the year. And we did this for every break. And there's some today that are, are, are only surfable for a few, much, you know, less than 10% of the time. Most of the Santa Cruz County coast, especially in the urbanized areas, is armored or cliff-backed. As uh high tides interact with the coastal structures, it reduces the quality of surf and often cancels it out, sending waves bouncing back and disrupting the quality of surf and thus the surfability. sending waves bouncing back and disrupting the quality of surf and thus the surfability. So, we looked at adding sea level rise, one foot, two foot. By three feet, almost most of the, by four feet, most of the breaks are gone. By three feet, only the ones around the lane and Pleasure Point are surfable at any real amount. And so, we started to ask, that's what happens if we do nothing. But we're creative people. We're going to try and adapt, especially when we start realizing that when we go from almost $200 million a year to the county, to the surf, from the surf economy to zero when all the breaks are gone. If we keep armoring our coast, not letting, you know, not moving out of the harms way when it's appropriate, then we started to look at four different adaptation strategies. Continuing to armor, push more rocks out, expand our revetments. What if we replace some of those with a vertical seawall? So, we buy back a lot of the beach and coastline that's been buried under rocks that are two-to-one slope, on a 40-foot slope, take up 80 feet of the beach. If we move to a five-foot footprint, we have 75 feet of beach back. That buys time to enhance surfing. What if we were to look at implementing or altering sand management programs, which would widen those beaches, reduce the influence of coastal armoring on our surf breaks? That also buys time and adds more money annually for a longer period of time to the Santa Cruz economy. And then we looked at managed retreat. Managed retreat has a bad name. I think about it as getting out of the way gracefully. We can't, it's not an evacuation, but over time, you know, the ocean's going to win. We either work with that or we suffer. And so, we looked at those four strategies over time. And this is one example from 26th Avenue. And these squiggly lines, basically, the blue line is historic. Anything above that blue line, and there is a laser pointer, there is not a pointer, okay. Anything that's above that blue line is generating more revenue for longer periods of time. So, the blue line is the second from the bottom. The red line is sand management. That will buy more time for as long as their surf breaks. If we were to replace that rock revetment, that is at a two-to-one slope at 40 feet, and reclaim 75 feet of beach, we increase the surfability up to about a foot and a half of sea level rise. So, we would actually potentially gain more economic revenue and increase capacity, reducing some of the barriers to inclusion and overcrowding. If we look at managed retreat, we actually can increase and maintain our surf breaks almost an extra foot of sea level rise. Again, that's three feet. That's maybe end of the century, 2080. We have time to plan this and implement this, but there are opportunities in policy and the findings from this. Thank you. The findings from this really provide a good economic basis for integrating surf breaks into coastal management decision-making. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Sean to talk about some of the recommendations.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, some, you know, shocking numbers there going into sea level rise, but with, working with adaptation. There's so much in this project, you know. It truly was a groundbreaking study, looking into the surf breaks here in Santa Cruz. I encourage you to look at the full report online at savethewaves.org. So, yeah, you heard from Dave, heard from Bella, heard from myself. We took pretty much all voices of the surf community into this study. And so, we're here today to tell you that, you know, surfing needs to be taken into priority and working more today on the offense instead of just on the defense. If we don't look into this stuff, you know, it's real-world problems that are changing surf breaks right here. I think you've all seen the video of Steamer Lane and the truck-sized boulder falling into the wave. I surf there every day. That wave is changing. After each winter, there's erosion, sea cliff, Capitola Wharf, Santa Cruz Wharf. There's a lot of erosion happening today. And as you can see with the vulnerability assessment going into the future with sea level rise, this is serious stuff that needs to be prioritized. So, a little bit of recap of this project. Surfability with sea level rise is changing here in Santa Cruz. We could lose out on economic revenue through surfing. So, we need to look at protection and adaptation towards surf breaks. 194.7 million annually on current conditions right now is bringing the city of Santa Cruz. Our goal with this project is to also use Santa Cruz as a model. We've created this awesome methodology with our partners to bring this statewide. And that's hopefully what we can do. Go to places like Surf City USA and other places. I'm just, I put that in parentheses because Santa Cruz is a real surf city. But Huntington Beach, you know, they call Surf City USA. But we want to see what else is, you know, what this project can bring to other coastal communities in California. So, here today in front of you all to hopefully, you know, you can understand the feeling and the value of that surfing brings, you know. Surfing is, you know, it's a lifestyle. And here in Santa Cruz, we're so fortunate to have world-class waves, but also thriving ecosystem, ocean and beaches, that along this 29 miles of coastline in Santa Cruz County is so beautiful. So, you know, we have some policy, you know, implications and recommendations for your leadership. I think putting this, these findings and what we presented today into the LCP, myself and Bella are part of the community working group for the LCP that's being worked on right now. I think adding in this data from this study into the LCP going forward, prioritizing surf breaks, looking at adaptation, making sure we're managing our coastline effectively with surf breaks. And so, that's one way that you, the board supervisors, can take leadership on protecting surf breaks here in Santa Cruz. Again, I just want to say thank you very much. I know you all address very important matters, and I hope you realize the importance of surfing here in Santa Cruz County. Thank you very much, and we're here for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. First, we'll take it out to the public to see if anyone would like to address us on this item.
Thank you for the presentation, Becky Steinbrenner. I saw your presentation also to the Santa Cruz City Council. It was excellent. Thank you. I want to just mention, well, what would Bill Gates say? Wherein he has recently said, "The poverty poses a much greater threat to our world than does climate change." Think about that and think about it. There are kids living in Watsonville that have never been to the beach. That's pretty amazing. I would like to ask you to perhaps call up county parks staff and find out what programs they do offer for free or reduced rates for kids in Watsonville and around the county to be able to go to the beach, to be able to surf, to be able to just be in the ocean water. It is amazing that many have never been there. I also want to say that we have to protect our water quality for our surfing population, for our beachgoers. And to that end, the city of Santa Cruz wastewater effluent pipe has leaks. And this is a documented fact known by the city, brought to the attention of the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. This effluent pipe does leak near shore. And it happened because of severe storms. So, the city is not willing to do anything about it because of cost. But we must keep an eye on that. I also want to say that the Pure Water SoCal project will be dumping millions of gallons every day of concentrated brine effluent from their wastewater treatment of the Pure Water SoCal at this, through this pipe as well, with no studies about the impacts on the marine or the health of people nearby. I want to give a shout-out to Operation Surf for veterans who do surfing and stay at the beach for disadvantaged kids. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Call in user two. Your microphone's now available.
It sounded like an excellent presentation of the dire situation of our oceans, but I could only hear part of it because the sound quality of the meeting today is extremely poor. I did hear you refer to strategies we could be taking. And I'd like to add on to that. What are some of the causes of the climate catastrophes besides the pollution being done by chemical agriculture with lots of pesticides? The, in fact, I'm diverting here. I saw a film recently called Out of Plain Sight about DDT. And I recall in 1969, there were traces of DDT in every bucket full of ocean water way back then. I learned from the film that DDT was the first forever chemical. And now, there's electro-pollution from cell towers under the ocean, the geoengineering. I think an important strategy is to try to stop this geoengineering, and I refer you to geoengineeringwatch.org. Global climate modification programs are threatening all life on Earth, including contributing to extreme drought, flooding and storms. Global geoengineering has completely disrupted the planetary.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. I'll bring you back to the board for any comments, questions. Supervisors Cummings.
Yeah, first, just want to thank you all for bringing this presentation to the board's attention. I remember when you all came to the California Coastal Commission and hearing, you know, the economic side of surfing really, you know, just blew us away in terms of how much surfing contributes to not only our local economy, but then extrapolate that to California's economy and how much and how important surfing is to our communities. And so, I did just want to, and maybe this can be a question for staff or it's a question for you all, but I did just want to touch on the local coastal program updates and wanting to better understand how this is being incorporated into that plan. So, maybe we could hear from staff, but also since a couple of years on that technical advisory panel, it'd just be great to understand how this kind of data fits into that overall planning. And then also, maybe if you could just say kind of where things are at with that too, since we haven't heard about it in a while.
Yeah, good morning, Board. Stephanie Hansen, CDI. The work that CDI is doing falls with my team. We will be taking this information into account, particularly for the unincorporated areas. As you know, Dave is also on our consulting team working on that, and these folks are on our working group as well. So, they're mid-process. I think they're trying to get through the basic assumptions for the study. And we know it's taking, you know, we knew this was going to be a three-year process, but we will continue to be working on it. And it's actually going very strongly, I think. So, happy to answer. Any questions?
Great. No, thank you. That was really helpful. And I guess when we talk about inclusion, I'm just wondering if there's any from Ms. Bonner, based on the work that you all have done, kind of what local jurisdictions can do to try to help increase inclusion? I know that there's some member of the public who just spoke to that, and we've done a little bit of work here at the board to increase nonprofits to be able to have permits to conduct surfing schools. But I'm wondering if there's anything else you might want us to hear today is that we can consider how we can best support inclusion in surfing?
Yeah. One of the biggest barriers we've seen is the access to permitting that the county and the city have worked really hard on reducing some of the barriers as to who's able to teach surf lessons. So, some of the nonprofits or some of the surf school ordinances that are in place throughout our entire county have historically been a huge barrier. But through policy shifts and through conversations, we've been able to see some of those barriers be removed. We're also seeing lack of access to transportation. So, public transportation to our beach breaks. You know, you can have access to a surfboard, you can have access to a wet suit, but do you have access to transportation to go to and from the beach? Are you having to pay for parking? So, the least barriers financially that we can see are very, very helpful, as well as City of Santa Cruz also implemented cultural sensitivity training to all surf schools. So, everyone who holds that surf school permit is now required to go through cultural sensitivity training. And then, lastly, I'll say, one of the most interesting findings for myself through this project was when you looked at some of the surf breaks that have the most access, so parking structures, showers, staircases, so are the quote "most accessible", we see culturally the most territorialism happening and hostility at those surf breaks. And so, by addressing the culture, whether that be through signage or through ways that really say that in our county, we don't have a tolerance for hate, is a huge step as well. So, addressing some of those cultural barriers that we see within surfing as well.
Thanks. I just have one more comment, one more question to. The comment I would like to make is just that, you know, through what you're saying right now, it seems like even maybe bringing this to the attention of the Metro Board, and we have two Metro Board members here. But, you know, getting surfboards onto buses seems like it can be a challenge. And the fact that we've outfitted buses with bike racks, you know, is there an opportunity to outfit buses with surf racks? And then are there routes that will actually take people from these disadvantaged areas and drop them closer to surf breaks so that alleviates that barrier? Maybe a way of helping to address some of these access issues as well. So, I hope you all can take that into account. And then my last question, you know, this is really kind of a unique study that's been done now. And with all the threats to, that we're hearing now, to oil and gas exploration and deep seabed mining, I'm just wondering if there's opportunities to expand this kind of study to look at the economic value, for example, like national marine sanctuaries and how that kind of destruction can have impacts on local jurisdictions?
That's a, that's a great question. The economics here, when we did the economics, we sort of broke out, what are the visitor revenues generated by visitation? And then we also looked at what the services provided associated with surfing. A similar study could be, a study like that could be expanded to look at direct revenue generated by the sanctuary, by, you know, water quality. There's been a lot of water quality studies, sea clean, trying to map pollutant sources out into the ocean. Those can be quantified in a natural resource economic evaluation. And I'm having lunch with the California Marine Sanctuary Foundation, one of their vice presidents tomorrow. And that was something that came up at the Sea Star Gala the other, a couple of weeks ago. And I think there is a need for including environmental economics in local coastal program, ocean management, all of these things that are really hard to quantify. We haven't for a long period of time. And yet, everybody here would acknowledge that there is a value of the ocean, of the surf break that we don't mow the grass for, of the way we feel when we're standing, looking at the ocean and seeing sea otters. That really is an economic and mental health benefit. So, I think it is very possible and can be used to sort of help influence decisions around deep sea mining and oil and gas and things like that.
Thank you. Supervisor Zoban?
I'm sorry I left because I was having a little need for a drink of water. Can you just go over briefly how you got to the $194 million valuation of the economics? Because that seems enormous, like an enormous number, and I'm not quite sure, like, how you got there.
Sure. There's a lot more detail in the report, and I am not the economist, so I can't get into all of the nitty-gritty. However, we did look at direct revenues. So, what is being spent from surf shops, from jobs associated with the surf industry? We've also looked at visitor travel costs. We've also looked at visitor travel cost model. So people come from around the world to come surf Santa Cruz. And so we've broken those up annually. It's about 45 million for people coming to visit Santa Cruz to go surfing alone. And we used a lot of cellphone data that, you know, sort of shows where people are coming from and where they're, you know, focusing their time, and where do they go after they get out of the water? So we sort of were able to backtrack kind of where they're coming from, that distance, and then where they go afterwards to spend money, buy shop, you know, buy, you know, services. So that's part of how we got at that.
And since I represent Mid and South County, I noted that there was no, nothing said at all about any of the breaks that are south. It seemed to be very focused on the Santa Cruz area. It was, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. And then the last point on the last question, too, is we had a two-year-long survey out there. It was about a 10-minute survey, how we were able to get people's feedback. And so, yeah, you know, capacity-wise, I wish we could have done this, you know, throughout the county, because like I mentioned, there's over 60 surf breaks just in the county. We focus prioritizing the 31 surf breaks in the Santa Cruz World Surfing Reserve. So the Santa Cruz World Surfing Reserve spans from Natura Bridges down to Capitola. And this was actually even before Capitola was a part of the World Surfing Reserve. But now it spans three jurisdictions, Capitola, the county, and then the city of Santa Cruz. And so, the World Surfing Reserve has been around since 2012. And so we have a pretty good understanding of the surf breaks, working with local stewardship council of people that are kind of represented as local stakeholders on those waves and coastline. And so, because we felt like the capacity to analyze surf breaks or, you know, the vulnerability assessment, and then also getting survey numbers from people at countywide is a pretty grand and could potentially be a tricky project, we wanted to focus it on the World Surfing Reserve. We actually applied to the Ocean Protection Council to make this more of like a statewide project where we could assess surfing in Southern California and Santa Cruz and Northern California. But they wanted us to start a little bit smaller. And it's kind of, so we looked at this as kind of like a pilot project. And so hopefully, one day, yeah, we can expand to the county and, like I mentioned, other parts of California as well.
Thank you.
If I can add one thing to that, since I am working with the county on the local coastal program vulnerability adaptation planning that'll help inform the LCP update, we, one of the wonderful things that came out of this study is a value per person that's spent on a day going surfing. And so, we hope in that LCP process to leverage this study, get some estimates of the numbers of surfers elsewhere in the county, and be able to sort of bring in a bigger representation across the county. So South County will not be forgotten.
Supervisor Martinez.
Thank you. Just like to start off by thanking you for bringing this presentation to us today. I'm very much in support of opening up these really, you know, pro-social, healthy, outdoor activities for our youth, for our public, and educating us about the economic impact of such activities, and the impact on local tourism, and just one of the things that makes our region great. So I very much appreciate you bringing that today. You know, a couple of thoughts. One, you know, it sounds like you have some statewide plans and hopes to expand the study and integrate it into state policy. And if there's any way that we can support you in that through our legislative partners, our local state representatives, I'd be happy to support you in those connections. I'm sure other members of the board would as well. So please stay in touch with us if there's things that we can do to support your efforts moving forward. At the local level, I heard comments about our Santa Cruz metro. I do sit on the Metro Board, actually rode the bus yesterday with my kids. And I'd be happy to at least ask the question and bring up a conversation about policies around surfboards on buses. I actually don't know what the policy is today and what might be possible in the future, but I'd be happy to bring that conversation forward to the metro. And finally, you know, I just want to name that the conversation that we're having today is really a part of an ongoing conversation about our, you know, historic reliance on fossil fuels and our goals to reduce greenhouse gases and to reduce the impact of climate change through a variety of things that our county has adopted, including our climate action and adaptation plan. And given that there might be some intersection between the CAP and this presentation, I was wondering if I can ask Director Reed if he can come up and if anything stands out to you about ways that our local climate action and adaptation plan either incorporates the comments today or, you know, could possibly support these goals moving forward?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Dave Reed, OR3. Actually, there's a couple areas that this conversation today make connections with the work that we're doing. One is certainly with the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, certainly around sea level rises driven by greenhouse gas emissions. So whatever we can do in reducing emissions is critical, especially given the changes in the federal government's support for those emission reduction efforts. Couple other places that are important, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan that we are now submitting to the state this week, actually, has a number of strategies in it around coastal adaptation that will be addressed through the LCP work that's been discussed already. And then the third one that I would bring up is that during the Measure Q Vision Plan process, there was extensive comment made around coastal access in South County and the need to improve coastal access to South County. So in South County, and particularly along the kind of beach corridor or beach street corridor. So I think there's lots of opportunities with the value of this study to advance the work in the CAP through Measure Q, as well as the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Director Reed. And, you know, you see that we've got community partners who are eager to work with you, and I look forward to hearing how that partnership continues to progress. Thank you.
Supervisor Gullman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the great presentation. I mean, I think you've basically kind of grabbed something out of the ether that we all know is there here in Santa Cruz, and you've measured it. And whether or not it's an accurate measurement is sort of irrelevant at this point because it's an initial measurement, which is a lot more than no measurement. You know, the subtext, of course, of what you're talking about with all these public benefits is the private benefits that exist with people who own coastal homes and want to protect them with some kind of seawall or other protection mechanism, and how those are increasingly going to come into conflict with sea level rise. What I found myself thinking about is, well, what is the, what is the very measurable benefit from the private homes, right? Even just in terms of tax revenue that the county gets? And where's the inflection point? Where all of a sudden the loss of public benefits is now, you know, greater than the total benefit that the private homes are providing? And of course, it's not just surfing. I mean, it's our, all of our beaches. And I would almost be interested to see this extended to the width of our beaches, the amount of time that, you know, popular beaches are walkable. Because, I mean, I think the tourism industry overall in Santa Cruz is close to $1 billion a year, right? And so, those public benefits are really enormous. I'm curious, in particular, what you see, you know, one place that comes to mind is East Cliff, because, I mean, as you said, there's four great surf spots out there, or four great breaks that are consistent there. But also, we've already, you know, we've already got this armoring project, arguably pretty good one, in that it attempts to mirror some natural features. But we've already, and we've got public infrastructure right there, right? So, I mean, this seems like a prime example where we might have to think about something like sand nourishment, or, I mean, I don't know, what else we could consider there, you know, artificial reef, or groins, or something. Because in that case, it's a little bit harder to just make the road go away. We would actually lose a lot of that access, right? I mean, you'd have to start now taking away the road and a row of homes in order to maintain public access. So quickly becomes incredibly expensive, and that inflection point might be further off in the future. So just curious about any ways you're approaching places like that.
There are so many deep thoughts in there, Supervisor. And I do appreciate you moderating that town hall with the Oceanfront Property Owners Association, I guess, two weeks ago. It was insightful for me to hear some of that perspective. Mic is, I'm not good with the mic, I guess. It's just too short. So I guess my reactions would be that this is a data point. And if anything, I'd say it may be underrepresentative because we did rely on cellphone data, and we know there's a lot of surfers that live in Pleasure Point that don't take their phone surfing. So it may be greater. We didn't look at the impact of the contests or events. So this could be much larger than 194.7 million. And I scolded my economists for using even a decimal point as we came up with these calculations, but that's what the calculation showed. There are many homes that infrastructure replacement costs, all of that is a tremendous burden on the community that would really suffer. The ocean and the water quality would go to poop if the wastewater infrastructure breaks and isn't protected. We can't have a community without a functioning sanitary system. There are checks and balances. The whole coastal act is about balancing public trust with infrastructure and development. And the LCP process that I'm also involved in, you know, we are attempting to lay out these different options and look at some of the other options, potentially groins, other, other strategies for adaptation that, and then compare the costs and benefits over time to try and understand that inflection point. So I have a feeling I will be back in front of you all, talking about the LCP process. I will say that we are trying to get a final vulnerability assessment, which lays out the impacts of, with the existing coastal armoring and without by beginning of March. So there will be, and then we will get into these adaptation trade-offs as well. So the economics from this study will definitely inform some of that work. But there, it will be a balance, and it will be a community decision.
Yeah, thank you. Look forward to watching this process evolve and the study and the various elements of, as you said, looking, taking this report, integrating it into the vulnerability assessment, integrating that, the local coastal program amendment. It will be a valuable process. And definitely some, you know, it's, it seems like we have a fair amount of time now, but I mean, obviously, it's an accelerating problem, right? I mean, the models that, sort of general statewide models say we should be planning for a foot of sea level rise by 2050, but five feet by 2100. So it's, it's something we're really going to have to grapple with very quickly come the second half of the century, and now is the time to start thinking about what we're going to do. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I just kind of want to also ask, I don't know if it's Parks or the group here, kind of same line that some of the public comment from Becky and Supervisor Cummings. I know that I had read before that there was some sort of youth teen program in Live Oak somewhere. I'm wondering if that's still going to continue and if there's going to be opportunities for South County kids to be involved in that process. And I, you know, I'm also glad that Becky mentioned the surf group, the veteran surf group, because I think it's very good in terms of wellness for a lot of the veterans to get out there in the, in the surf. And also, you know, speaking of tourism, I want to make sure that we do involve, you know, the Santa Cruz County Tourism Board, along with surfing. I had the opportunity to, I ended up a few years ago in Beryat's, France, and they're really into surfing over there. And one of the little shops that I went to that sells some of the, you know, the tourism little keychains and magnets, they had City of Santa Cruz up on there, and they said, they had a little thing that was a, that it was France's surf capital and that they're sister cities with the City of Santa Cruz. So they take great pride in that, that they're the surf capital there in France, and also sister cities with Santa Cruz, that they call the surf capital of California. So, yeah, we got to continue with the tourism end of it, too. Thank you.
Good morning. Jeff Gaffney, County Parks Director. Sorry about that. Yeah, you asked a question about programs that we can do in South County and programs we're working on in South County. We've been working in partnership with our County Park Friends nonprofit, and with Bella and her team. And we are currently working towards more outdoor education programming, especially in South County. We're very focused on that. We've got hundreds of programs we've been doing the last couple of years. And specifically in this area, this is one of the outdoor education initiatives that we're looking towards. We recently, with your board's approval, are moving towards hiring a recreation coordinator, and that specific position is for outdoor education. And so this is something we've been striving for, for literally a decade, and very excited that we're in this space, especially now during this time in our, in our world, that we can provide these places that are almost like water and food to people, having the outdoor space, having places to go, being able to recreate like this. And I'm very excited that we get to hear presentations like this, that is a reminder to this board and everybody that they are so important to people. So we're working on that right now.
I just want to add one thing to that comment. A lot of the South County beaches are state park-run and mandated, and so the permitting process for state park, for like Manresa or Sunset State Beach, are a whole nother world. And so talking to agency partners like state parks about their statewide surf ordinance and permitting processes would help as well. And at Black Surf Santa Cruz, we've taken out a few South County groups, including partnering with Food What to take out their youth at Manresa State Beach. And that was our first Aptos South County partnership to, you know, really start to have conversations about the access barriers that we see in South County.
Thank you. That's awesome. I'll bring you back to the board to see if, to entertain, oh, no, actually, okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. We do have a scheduled item for 10:45. We're going to begin that now and move from item eight to item number 11. The next agenda item is number 11, hold a public hearing to consider whether the mosquito vector and disease control assessment should be formed and assessed and levied and collected as proposed in the engineer's report starting fiscal year 26, '27, and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Amanda Paulson, Assistant Vector Control Manager, and Brandon Van Luven of SEI Consulting for the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. Our consultants, SEI, Brandon Van Luven, will make a few comments.
Yes. Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Good morning and thank you, Chair. Ballots were mailed on September, good morning, Chair. Ballots were mailed on September 2nd to all identified property owners within the proposed assessment area, consistent with Prop 218 procedures. Replacement ballots are available today for verified property owners. And the engineer's report on file outlines the benefit methodology and the proposed budget for fiscal year 26, '27, for the proposed mosquito vector and disease control assessment. After the close of today's public hearing, all submitted ballots will be secured for tabulation, and the results will be reported at the continued hearing on November 18th. Depending on the outcome of that tabulation, the board may consider the next steps in the process at this time. All ballots must be received by the end of the public input portion of the hearing to be tabulated. And I'm going to be over in this corner over here if you need a replacement ballot for this process.
So this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up to the public to see if anyone would like to address us on this item. Or like to get a ballot.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner, resident of Aptos Hills. I want to also confirm that you will include Ms. Maria Marsilio's comment that was provided during open comment. She, like many people, cannot stay until this happens. So please incorporate her comment into today's record for this public hearing. The issue I have... The issue I have with this is that it was not clear, a clear separation of general benefit versus specific benefit. And that is an important issue in the California Constitution, Article 13, Section C and D, Prop 218, engineers reports must clearly specify and delineate special versus general benefit. So, can you please talk about that and explain to the public and the supervisors how that is delineated? Thank you.
Yes, Chair. Call in user 002, your microphone's now available. The speaker has put their hand down, I'm going to move, I'm going to move to the next speaker.
Call in user two, your microphone's now available.
It's so difficult to hear the poor quality of sound today.
No, we are on item 11, scheduled item for 10:45. We'll come back to that item later.
I can't even hear your response.
No, we're on item 11, a scheduled item for 10:45. We'll come back to item number eight in a few minutes. Thank you.
So, what item are you presently on?
11, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'll just.
I believe we're on item 11.
You're on item 11? I heard your voice on the scheduled item about the mosquito vector. Okay, I voted no on that. The history of the use of pesticides has to do with a lot of toxicity and harm to the public and doesn't solve the problem. We need ecological solutions. I do not have given the history any trust in this kind of abatement control. That's my comment.
Call in user 002, your microphone's now available.
So, I do have, this is a public hearing, I do have additional comments. Are there any written communications to be read into the record at this point?
We received two letters of objection that were provided in the board packet, but that's all that we've received.
Thank you, I'll bring you back to the board now. I want to note that at the end of the board discussion, we will be issuing the last call for the ballot submission. I'll bring you back to the board. Supervisor Cummings?
I'll move the recommended actions.
We have a motion as second. I will close after this vote. I will close the allotted time for submission of ballots. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor DeSerphe.
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. So, at this time, leave the last call for ballot submission. And I will now close this hearing. We'll now move to item number eight, consider the proposed focus area for county strategic plan 2032 and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Nicole Coburn, County Executive Officer, and Sven Stafford, Principal Administrative Analyst, and Bella Bonner, Executive Director of Black Surf Santa Cruz County.
So, thank you, Chair, members of the board. So, I'm Nicole Coburn, County Executive Officer. Today, I'm going to be presenting with Sven Stafford, who's a Principal Administrative Analyst in our office, and Bella Bonner, who is Executive Director of Black Surf Santa Cruz, who you just heard from in the previous presentation. Together, we're a part of the design team working on this and going through the feedback that we had received from the public. So, today, we're going to present for your consideration six focus areas for the next strategic plan. To get to these six, we want to tell you what we heard from residents and our community partners. It's important to remember that the strategic plan is about focusing our limited resources where they're going to have the greatest impact for our residents. We're going to talk about what we've heard, what matters most to the community, and how we're going to stay focused on results. So, right now, as the board is aware, we're really feeling the pressure from all sides. We're feeling it from federal cuts, rising costs, and growing community needs. So, I just want to start out with an anecdote or kind of putting this in context. So, imagine being a farmworker family here in our county, the harvest is coming to an end and money is tight. You are not eligible for CalFresh, our food security program, but your child is because they were born here. Now, that money which potentially helps feed an entire family isn't coming in and you have to start making decisions that are unimaginable for most of us. In the past two board meetings alone, you have approved almost $750,000 in emergency funding for programs like Head Start and CalFresh. It's over $1 million for this calendar year if you take into account the additional board provided support for undocumented members of our community and LGBTQ members of our community. Both of these continue to be scared and threatened by the federal administration. These decisions were vital, but they are not sustainable and we can't do everything for everyone, but we know it's critical to act and do the most important things well when we can. That means aligning our work because alignment and action are what create impact. This strategic planning process is an opportunity for us to do that together. So, this slide here, you've seen before, it's our timeline of the strategic plan project update. This process has been building all year long from the foundational review that we brought to you in August to the community engagement that we're currently underway right now. We are in the process of defining our six focus areas. We'll be going through that with you and talking first about what we heard from the community, but I want to note that approving the focus areas today will allow us to move to the most interesting phase of development, which really focuses on results, indicators, and alignment, and Sven will talk about that more. But first, to ground us in what we've heard from the community, I'm going to hand it over to Bella, who's going to be, who's been a lead voice on our design team and leading the engagement work.
Thank you, and hi again. So, the engagement of this phase of the plan has been done in two parts, a countywide survey and 18 focus groups. The chart that you're looking at now is from the survey, which asks respondents to choose their top three standard drivers of health. These in the subsequent charts do not aim to say that any of these standard drivers is unimportant, but rather that this is a snapshot of what is top in mind for people in the county right now. Across every region, housing, the economy, and transportation were top survey priorities. In our focus groups, we heard that people want visible action and connection across systems. Now, let's look a little bit deeper at how various groups within our community rated these priorities. Disaggregating the data helps us to see whose needs might be hidden in the averages. It's also important to remember that there is much more than what we have in common than divides us. For example, San Lorenzo Valley residents rated natural environment higher than any other region, perhaps reflecting their proximity and vulnerability to nature. Residents aged 18 to 54, housing was the most overwhelming priority, and perhaps because of the stress of housing, health, and mental health, also rose into the top three. The same is true for renters within our community, for renters being able to meet basic needs like Nicole mentioned with providing food on the table. Over 68 of respondents identified as women, and for our male identifying residents, transportation and jobs rose to the top, perhaps signaling what men need to both contribute economically to their families and also to be able to enjoy the fruits of that labor without sitting in traffic. To give the survey some more context, let me tell you a little bit more about what was heard from four days at the county fair and another 18 focus groups that were conducted in the last two months from Paharo Valley to San Lorenzo Valley. People overwhelmingly talked about wanting spaces where they feel included. This was evident in a conversation at the Rainbow Youth Conference where kids asked to be able to have pride flags in the classrooms, and with the MilPA collective that talked about providing transportation to parks and to the ocean so that people in South County can develop relationships with each other and with nature. The youth task force pictured in the middle talked about the need for third spaces for gathering and being and belonging. People want to engage and there's a desire to build connection, and that's an opportunity for the county to build trust, especially at the local level. The first step to build that trust is to reflect what was heard in our strategic plan that Sven's going to show us how we turn those voices into the six focus areas that you will see next.
Thank you, Bella, and good morning, board. The six areas, housing and infrastructure, health and well-being, safety and justice, community care, and resilience, environment, and economy represent both what we heard and where we can have real impact. Each one of these connects to community voice that Bella talked about and to our internal capacity and what we actually do and the services that we provide. And so, the purpose of these is to create focus, alignment, and shared accountability within each focus area. We heard a lot about the desire for alignment between this strategic planning effort and all of the different county plans that we have. And so, one of the things that we were very intentional about is trying to connect with existing county plans. And so, you can see here, for example, in housing and infrastructure, that we have our regional housing needs assessment, we have our CIP within community care and resilience, we have our homeless for, housing for a healthy Santa Cruz plan, our master plan on aging within health and well-being, we have our community health improvement plan, our Behavioral Health Services Act plan that we'll be working on and bringing to the board early next year. This is about building, trying to build one story from many efforts that we have going on across the county so that the county is moving in the same direction and using data indicators and objectives from these efforts to feed the strategic plan and provide guidance for those plans on how they align with overall county results. Here you can see for the last three focus areas, again, in safety and justice, we have our community corrections partnership that does an annual plan. We've had a shared plan, a shared safety plan with Environment. Director Reed talked about the climate action and adaptation plan, Measure Q, and the local hazard mitigation plan that's being worked on. And then, within our economy and job growth focus area, there's a workforce development plan, strategic plan, that's done by our workforce innovation board and the broadband master plan that we have. We'll also, I think it's important to note, be incorporating the work of the federal impacts group that's meeting on November 20th, and then we'll continue to develop that work so that as we meet with community about the federal impacts, that will also be incorporated into the strategic plan. And as we look towards how we are going to make this, how we're going to be accountable for this, we do want to talk about the lenses and guiding lenses we'll be applying. So, we will use a health and all policies lens to try to keep well-being central to every decision. The equity lens will ensure that our work benefits those who have been least well-served, who are most vulnerable in our community. And the fiscal lens will ensure that our goals are realistic and sustainable. Ultimately, these three lenses will end up as a set of questions that the board hopefully will direct us to incorporate into policy decisions that come back before you. And so, we want to be able to align those set of questions, our county values that we're currently working on, and then the plans that we have to incorporate all of those so that when things are coming before the board, they're presented in a holistic manner that, where you can make those connections and you can see that staff have done the work that you're expecting to be able to make the decisions in line with the priorities that you've set for the community. And so, Nicole will close us out with what comes next.
So, in terms of next steps, our design team is going to be drafting results and indicators for each of these six focus areas based on the indicators you approved in May. We're then going to engage commissions, partners, and community groups to look at what's working and what needs to change. We have a January board retreat that we are planning to schedule that will share what we've learned and work with you to begin validating and prioritizing where we can have the biggest impact. After that, we're going to do the same exercise with our community road shows to make sure that what we're doing makes sense to the people we're serving. So, with that, we're making steady progress, building alignment, and doing so by giving the board a framework from which we can make some of the hard decisions that we're going to be faced with over the next year and into the future, and we're happy to take any of your questions and comments.
Thank you for the presentation. First, I'll see if there's anyone in the public wishing to address us on this item.
He was running, he was anxious to report on this. Thank you for the report. My name is Becky Steinbruner. As a member of the public, I have to say that none of this makes sense to me. And I didn't hear any mention of the county's dashboard of the strategic plan that was implemented. I hear there will be a design team, is that going to be a consultant group? Is that going to be in-house? None of this makes sense to the public. And I really have always questioned this strategic plan issue. It seems like it has taken up a lot of staff time with the primo meetings with department heads, and I haven't really seen a lot of results. I'm sorry, but I have to be honest. So, help the public understand how this is really going to improve our lives. I know that money is short and I know there are going to be some very difficult decisions made, but how exactly is this design team going to draft the indicators that will help the board during this Cummings budget season? I'll be watching, and I hope that it's good, but right now... I'll be watching, and I hope that it's good, but right now, it isn't clear. And I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Call-in user 002, your microphone's now available.
My name is James Huing Whitman. Now, I appreciate this brief presentation, and I did look over the information. It was probably less than 17 pages. So I'm going back to the Board of Supervisors meeting, August 19th, 2025, where this item, the Strategic Plan, came as number 11. And yeah, it talks about the three operation plan cycles, but during the 2018 to 2020, 2024, there were 469 objectives, where the county department said they completed 85 of these objectives. So we're really only talking about six objectives. So have all these other issues, the 469 objectives, been swept under the rug? So I'm just going to read as much of this as I can. I think the vaccine issue is a psyop. Not that vaccines aren't terrible, but the vaccine issue is being used as a psyop to get us focused on just that, rather than recognizing that we are being bombarded with nanotech via chemtrails, food, water, personal products, et cetera. So there is no such thing as a pure blood anywhere, anymore. So now they've got all us fighting and divided. I think they're going to make vaccines non-mandatory, at least in the U.S. And the Level One truthers are going to celebrate and think that we won, and JFK is a hero, and all that crap. So what's really going on? I realize I'm going to have to do some homework to find out what those 469 different objectives were. Anyway, I know the clerks are doing the best job they can, and it wasn't their intention for this meeting to be not as clear as it could be. Thank you very much.
Kathy, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name's Kathy. I'm in Aptos, California. I'm calling just in to appreciate the community outreach that's gone on with the strategic plan. Our team met with Sven earlier this month, and we really appreciate the conversation. So I just want to encourage this kind of future planning and extensive community outreach, and I look forward to participating in the community outreach as it continues for this. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
I'll bring you back to the Board. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for this presentation. I just want to start off by reminding all of us that our strategic plan process is a multi-step process and has been brought to the Board multiple times, even to get to this point. And I know that there are going to be future meetings moving forward. So just, this is just a snapshot in time of the work that we're doing together to ensure that our county has a clear plan moving forward. I really appreciate the integration of Health and All Policies as a lens to be used moving forward, and I look forward to seeing that fleshed out even further as we get, you know, further down the process, as well as the lens of equity and fiscal stewardship. These are all going to be really important pillars as we build out the rest of the plan. I personally have appreciated looking at some of the data that's been collected through the public. I found it both really interesting, but also very intuitive. You know, some of it's like, oh yeah, you know, this makes a lot of sense, and yet, I'm really glad that it's documented for us and that there's data for us to review. And so, I think that tells us that we're on the right track, and I'm really glad that this information has been gathered and that we've engaged the community in the ways that we have to collect these focus areas. I do have a question for CEO Coburn. I heard in your final remarks that the next step is to generate results and indicators based on what we approved in a previous meeting. Will the work that's been done and presented today with these new focus areas influence those? Was it a little cart before horse to approve those previously?
Yeah, no, this work, the committee feedback, and everything that's gone into these focus areas, it will inform kind of how we refine what you previously approved. So we will be coming to you at the Board Retreat in January with some more statements around what those results are and where we're heading. So it does build upon itself.
Wonderful, thank you. And then maybe you can help explain, both, you know, for the Board, but also for the public, how the strategic plan will help us make difficult decisions or set priorities moving forward, particularly in the context of, you know, the cuts and the fiscal challenges we see on the horizon. How is a strategic plan used to guide our course moving forward?
So, a strategic plan sets a vision for the county. So to the extent that we have to make decisions and evaluate trade-offs of what the county might need to adjust in terms of programs and services, what goes into the plan is an indicator of what we're prioritizing the most. Obviously, we could always adjust our priorities over time, depending on what the situation is, but it really serves as a guiding document to help us make those decisions.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I recognize that there's a possibility to have some difficult decisions and difficult cuts ahead. And so personally, I really value the community input, the engagement that's been done, the raising up of voices who historically haven't been at the table. So that way, when those difficult decisions come to us, and when we do have to set priorities for the county, that feedback is included and a part of a strategic plan that we can go back to when we are being asked to make these difficult decisions. So, so thank you very much for the effort. I look forward to the Board Retreat, and I look forward to continuing this process.
Supervisor Koenig?
Thank you. First question, so the focus areas were being asked to approve today, do those map to the goals in the current strategic plan?
So, these focus areas, the strategic plan, what we're trying to develop for the new six-year period, they will replace our existing focus areas and goals. So, we are leaving alone, for the most part, unless the Board has a desire to revisit it, the vision of the county, the mission of the county. We've come to you before with a desire to change the focus areas and the goals, and so those will, these will replace those. We are also going to be revisiting the values of the county to try to get to a more condensed list. So, you will see our website changing next spring, depending on what you finally approve.
Okay. Was there a need to do that? Like, was there identified need to change our fundamental goals?
Well, we received feedback that the community wanted to provide more input and that what it saw in terms of the county's goals weren't really reflective of everything that they were thinking and feeling. And so, it's always been the intention to revisit the focus areas and goals to see what changes we might be able to make. I think you'll see many of the current proposed focus areas reflect many of the things in our current plan in terms of focus areas and goals. We've rebranded them in a different way, and we've also placed more focus on what the county has control over. So that's kind of been some of the shifts we've made.
Okay. I guess I ask because I actually don't like the new focus areas all that much. I mean, for one, you've got duplication. I couldn't tell you what the heck is in Community Care and Resilience versus Health, Well-Being, and Connection. If even if you look at the icons, they both use hearts. Like, where does health belong? Where does homelessness belong? That's going to be confusing from now to 2032 if we implement it. There's one heart in the current set of six icons for our goals. Also, the fact that the two most important areas we heard were Housing and Transportation, they're separate in our current goals, and yet they're combined into a single focus area in the next set. I think that actually shortchanges both of them. Those are fundamentally very different policy areas. I mean, in one, we're a monopoly provider for transportation, making sure that infrastructure's, well, really all infrastructure, ensuring that roads, sewers, and storm drains are in good condition. And the other, we're trying to manage a very complicated market, a much more detailed set of policy, where we're issuing permits. I don't see how combining those does us any services, other than to kind of diminish both of those, and they're the two most important things that we heard from the community. So those are the two fundamental issues I see with the new proposal. I don't see what the additional focus areas are providing that are lacking in the current six goals, which, for my fellow Board members, you can find on the current strategic plan, which are Comprehensive Health and Safety, Attainable Housing, Reliable Transportation, Sustainable Environment, Dynamic Economy, and Operational Excellence. I mean, even like, we have an Office of Response Recovery and Resilience. In the focus areas, we have a sustainability and kind of response goal, but then resilience is used in the Community Care and Resilience focus area, which is to deal with homelessness and aging. I mean, this is, it's just a little bit convoluted to me. And I think that's, I mean, the outreach to the community is great, the feedback from the community is great. I don't, I haven't seen a lot of clarity come out of the process yet. I mean, as I've said before, if I was designing this process, I think I would start with all the people who directly receive county services. We're starting to do that in planning with actually having a feedback survey. I mean, we do the same thing with our clinics, with people who've just signed up for benefits. I mean, maybe a general survey for people who deal with our infrastructure every day, but how are we doing delivering our basic services today? Let's start there. How could we potentially expand those services to more people? You know, just going out and asking, what would you like government to do for you? It's somewhat helpful, but maybe not as helpful as that incremental improvement to services that we're doing every day, or that we need to be doing every day. So, I'll end my comments there for now.
Thank you, Chair, and I want to thank the staff and all the members of the public for their work on this. I guess the one question I had was, you know, looking at some of the numbers of, you know, residents participating in the surveys and the responses received. I mean, we're around, you know, 14, 1700, those are two different numbers that were referenced, and I'm just curious how, and to getting actually to some of Supervisor Koenig's points, how can we improve the amount of people we're hearing from? I mean, if we have a county of 267, roughly 1,000 people, and we're only getting responses from 14 to 1700, I'm just curious, is there something that we can do to help increase that number? And I think also, it would be helpful to understand who the people who are responding to these surveys are. Like, are they service providers? Are they service recipients? Because I do actually agree with some of Supervisor Koenig's points, you know, like, are we hearing from people who access county services? Are these the same people who typically fill out these surveys? Or are we actually hitting a broader net of folks? And are these people who generally come in to receive services from the county? Because I do think to that point, you know, he pointed out that operational excellence was removed. I think that's something that we really want to keep at our core of, you know, county services. Like, are we delivering services efficiently, effectively, and are we reaching the broadest amount of people? So I'm just wondering, like, in terms of just how we can reach more people at the survey, if you all have any kind of feedback on that.
Yeah, I want to note that we've been in places that we never were with the first strategic plan, and even this year, we were at the county fair, and we were there the whole time. We were engaging with people who usually don't engage with the county of Santa Cruz, and so they filled out our survey right there on the spot. We've been at a number of venues where the same thing happened in locations around the county. So, there probably are a lot of our normal service providers and others who may have responded, but I would say we've done a tremendous effort to try to reach people in a different way. And the survey was anonymous, so we're never going to know exactly who filled it out, although we do have a gift card raffle that we promised everyone. And so if you were willing to provide your name and information, we know who you are, but, and Sven might be able to speak to that a little bit. But obviously, we want to bump up the engagement, and we'll think about ways to do that. For this first strategic plan, we only engaged about 3,000 people out of 270,000 people in the county of Santa Cruz. So, right there, we're halfway to that benchmark, and that was through surveys, you know, two surveys, focus groups, and other things. So, we'll try to maximize the input. I think what our goal is to get different input, like you said, like, get the people who may not normally engage with us, so we can really hear what's on the ground. I mean, that is our goal at the end of the day. So, and if you have ideas for how, you know, we can reach more people, happy to take that into consideration, but we'll try to bump it up as much we can. And we've tried to organize the things that we've been hearing from the community in a way that makes sense. So, you know, the Housing and Infrastructure focus area, some of the things really go hand in hand. You know, we have to have the infrastructure in place to be able to build the housing or provide the economic development improvements that we need. So, we want, if we're working on things, we really want the goals that we're trying to achieve in that area, for instance, to be able to accomplish those results and to have objectives that have housing and infrastructure really hand in hand. So that's just one example.
Great, no, thank you, I appreciate that. And, you know, to the extent that we can also incorporate these types of opportunities into our newsletters, I can't remember, we tried, my office tries to include these surveys when they're going out in our newsletters, but to the extent that we can, you know, receive those surveys and help get the word, I think it's going to be much more helpful to try to engage with other communities as well. I did want to point out, one of the things I noticed in the area number five around Environment, talks about resiliency and sustainability, but we don't really talk about access. And I think that's something that we really want to incorporate into the strategic plan. I mean, we've heard that conversation today about increasing access around surfing, increasing access to outdoors, and so I think that trying to incorporate that into the environmental focus area is really critical as we're considering moving this forward. And I think one thing that I really hope that comes out of this plan is that it's not static. There are often times when, as we're seeing, I mean, we'll be talking about this in a little bit, but we just are hearing now that the President might not be moving forward with giving any of the SNAP benefits. And we are constantly seeing our communities being impacted by the federal government. And so, while I think it's good to have this as a plan, and it's a, you know, a roadmap for where we're going, just the complete uncertainty that's happening right now with the federal government. And then, over time, we just see uncertainties come up and issues come up that we can be flexible, and I know that our priorities may change depending on what's happening in the community. And so I just don't want to see this be something that's rigid, and that it's, you know, it's a goal of what we're trying to achieve, but knowing that when other priorities emerge, we may have to deviate and make some shifts.
Yeah, and if I may, Supervisor Cummings, I wanted to add that to your operational excellence comment. For me, that's a foundation of the entire plan, and so, we wanted to have more subject area, focus areas, and operational excellence is that foundation. It should be one of those lenses through which we're doing all of our work.
And I just appreciate that, too, because calling that out, I think, makes me happy to know that that is at the core and that these, you know, and how the framing of this is being thought about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Serpa?
Yeah, I just appreciate the work that's gone into this, the willingness to relook at some of the priorities and try to realign them as needed. I think, Nicole, I told you that I felt like there was voices from our business community that were missing. In the backup, you provided all of the different focus groups and groups you've reached out to, and that was great, but I didn't see any Rotary Clubs, I didn't see Chambers of Commerce, I didn't see any Economic Development Groups. see any Economic Development Groups, MBAP, or Santa Cruz Works, or any of those types of people. I think they have an important voice in our community that needs to be heard. So thank you for including those groups, Sven. I look forward to hearing more about it. Also, you know, a roadmap, goals, super important for all county operations, but in, with what we're, all counties are facing, including ours right now, we need to reevaluate and triage the most needed services to the very top of the pyramid. So, so I hope we sort of, in terms of planning right now, I hope we're taking that into account as well, because some of the things that we have been able to provide, we might not be able to based on our current budgets. And I'll just make a plug for what I believe is the county's biggest and most important infrastructure, and that is roads. And our, I know our roads budgets are very, very poor, but it's a very, very important part of what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Nicole and Ballas, Sven, for all their work on this, and all the other staff that worked on the strategic plan. You know, I did get to have an opportunity to do some of the surveys out here on September sixteenth celebrations, and I think Erica also helped out with that, too, as well at the county table. But it was really exciting to get people, I made the mistake of saying that everyone gets a gift card, but I didn't know it was like a raffle. Yeah, but we had a long line, because everybody wanted a gift card. But, you know, Supervisor Cummings said that we hope that, we hope that this strategic plan, that we continue working on it and not just make it, you know, stop or stagnate. And I kind of, you know, feel the same way about it. Have it as an evolving process that we continue to work on. And other than that, I want to just encourage the public to visit the website. It is very intuitive to, for the, for the public to visit this website for the strategic plan. With that, I'll bring it back to the board, see if anyone entertained the motion. I'll turn this off.
Okay, I'll give it a try. I'll start off with just a couple of comments in response to what I heard from my colleagues. To begin with, I appreciate hearing that the operational excellence piece would be incorporated as a foundational lens, and my hope, I won't make it as a part of additional direction, but my hope is that that will be called out in the same way that equity and fiscal sustainability might be, because I think that would address some of what I heard from others. I also, I felt comfortable with the grouping of the focus areas. I am hearing from my colleagues on the board that there might be some cleanup, or, you know, just being really laser focused on what the definitions are of these focused areas, so that way it's clear to us as board members, but also to the public. So things about, you know, how we use the word resilience, for example, just make sure it's consistent, and, you know, stay away from, from the kind of jargon that comes with these type of plans. But I do think that in looking at the work of the county and the existing plans that help guide the focus areas, the buckets that have been created do match well with that and will help us keep our work in alignment with a lot of countywide efforts. And so that's what I really liked about it. So with that, I'm not going to add any additional direction to the recommended actions, and I'll go ahead and move the recommended actions.
A second?
Sorry. We have a motion from Supervisor Martinez, and a second from Supervisor DeSerpah. Madam Clerk, if we could take a roll call?
Supervisor Conig?
No.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
DeSerpah?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes with one no vote from Supervisor Conig. Next agenda is the number nine, consider adopting a resolution declaring a local emergency impacting vulnerable residents due to lack of federal financial support for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP. Approve a contribution of up to $500,000 for emergency food procurement and distribution through Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Cruz County, and take all related actions. Please note, this is required for, a four out of five vote is required for this. I'll turn it over to Nicole Coburn, County Executive Officer, and David Reed, Director of Office of Response, Recovery, and Resilience, for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So David Reed, our OR3 directors here, as well as Kimberly Peterson, who is our Deputy Chief of, or Deputy of the Human Services Department, as well as Erica Padilla Chavez, who is our, the Chief Executive Officer of Second Harvest Food Bank. So this may be the first time we're declaring a local emergency for a food insecurity situation, but we are facing a lot of firsts here in Santa Cruz County and the nation. So we are here to ask you to declare an emergency and also consider approving a contribution up to $500,000 to Second Harvest Food Bank because of what we're experiencing right now due to the federal shutdown. So as you know, on Saturday, November first, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, which is also CalFresh here in California, lapsed, the benefits lapsed on Saturday due to the shutdown, and this is creating a really horrible situation for thousands, tens of thousands of low-income households in Santa Cruz County. We have over 30,000 people a month, and it ranges by month depending on who is on CalFresh, but at least 30 and up to 40,000 people who receive benefits through CalFresh for food. This is, this includes children, families, and other adults due to their situation economically. And so local food banks, fortunately, we have Second Harvest, who is just a tremendous partner, who is stepping up to help provide food to our community in this situation. You know that there is currently litigation and court orders that are instructing the federal government to issue SNAP benefits with some contingency funds. We are seeing through the news and through the administration, as well as through the Child Welfare Directors Association, that those benefits may not be loaded or deployed anytime soon. We are hearing a lot of different things regarding those court rulings. Most recently today, the federal administration is saying that those benefits may not actually get to people until this federal shutdown ends, even, even though there are court rulings. So at this moment in time, we believe that we, as a county, through donations, through the city of Santa Cruz, the city of Watsonville, that are each considering donating an additional $100,000, and the community foundation has committed another $100,000 to providing food ourselves to those who need it. So we have contributions totaling over $1 million now, between the county's contribution of a half a million dollars. Second Harvest Food Bank thinks that it will cost approximately $1 million a month to feed an additional 25,000, 25,000 people in Santa Cruz County, when we have, you know, anywhere from 30,000 to 40,000 people on CalFresh historically. So that alone may not even cover everyone who needs these benefits, but the community has been stepping up to provide food in a number of different ways. We will continue to help try to close the gap and fundraise for the remaining amount of money that's needed to feed people through the end of December. We have been told by our federal advocate and through Panetta's office that we should plan to feed people through the month of December, which is really just sad and unfortunate of where we're at. And so with all of that, Dave Reed can speak to the specifics of what the emergency declaration means, but we would like you to both declare this local emergency and provide a half a million dollars to support SNAP or CalFresh recipients until this federal shutdown ends. The board item provides the Human Services Department the authority to enter into this contract as soon as this week with approval of my office and county council. We will be providing some contract language. It's going to be a new agreement, and we're going to be having some contract language in there to break up the payment into what will mostly be four equal, four equal installments of $125,000, or, is that right? $125,000 in four equal installments, so that the Second Harvest can buy food, which they need to do two weeks in advance of actually deploying the food, and then will also give us an opportunity, should the shutdown end, that not all of those monies may be needed. So if we see it resolved, we will be able to keep whatever monies aren't needed to buy the food for one of our other impacts that we're anticipating over the next year. But we're happy to answer any questions you might have. I know you probably do have a number of them, and the staff is here to respond as well.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to public comment, and if anyone wishes to address this on this item, please do so now.
These are difficult times. And so before, when we heard this presentation, I suggested that the CEOs of these nonprofits, and that you, the board, tithe a certain percentage of your salary to help fund feeding the people that need it in our county. I'm going to ask you to do that again. I'm going to ask the CEOs of these nonprofits to also tithe a certain percentage to help us all, and that there is a, a real step up among the administrators to help here and to show the people that you are seriously concerned and are willing to suffer, too. There are a lot of people in this county that are willing to donate and to help ease the burden in these times, but I'm asking you to set a good example. I'm asking all of the top paid salaried people in the county to also step up, and that each of you on the board ask them to do that. It's not going to be a popular thing, but if we are all sincere in our wish to help those in need, and the need is great, we're hearing, then we all have to set a good example. And I will include myself in that. Thank you.
Yep. Hey, Trevor Hensson again. I just wanted to go over, we talked about a lot of different concerns about the community. Maslow's hierarchy of needs really sums it up, and a lot of those things are really under attack right now, and it's important to have the right leadership, like Erica Padilla, who I have the utmost confidence in, working with her for three years now. And I think she's the right person to help us through, especially the attack that's under, for food right now, for our citizens. Just to go over those needs real quick, the air, water, food, shelter, those are the biggest concerns. And if those are under attack, those take priority and precedent over everything else, because without those, you can't do anything else. You know, clothing, sleep reproduction, sleep and reproduction are both part of those essential needs. And then, on the next level, is personal security, health and well-being, stable environment, financial security, safety needs. And then it goes down the list. So just to know, just wanted to note that. But I have the utmost confidence in Erica, been working with her for a while, and she's the right person to see us through this. Please give her, you know, the time, the tools that she needs to help us steer this Titanic of a ship through these times. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
Okay, I'll bring you back to the board. Supervisor Cummings?
Thank you, Chair, and I just want to thank staff of this presentation, especially thank our CEO for her early engagement and outreach with Second Harvest Food Bank as a partner. I mean, it's really tragic that we find ourselves in this situation here today, and that we see the federal administration that is going back and forth on its commitment, which is really having significant negative impacts on people's lives and their concern around, you know, having access to food. And I can just say that, you know, towards the end of last week, I know there were some counties that, you know, they don't, they have their meetings at different times, so there's been people, you know, other communities taking different actions at different times. But today, I think really marks a really important day for our community, where we can demonstrate to our community our commitment to supporting folks with food, with food security. I do want to add another piece of direction here, which is because of the fact that back when I was mayor during COVID, it was really challenging when food security became an issue, to tell people and direct people, like, where they can go to get food resources. And I actually ended up reaching back out to the AFC to say, hey, do you guys have that list of where people can access food resources? Luckily, they still had that list. It's maybe not up to date, but we've been getting information from different sources of where people can go to get information about where they can go to get food, where they can go to donate food. There's been a lot of people reaching out about wanting to volunteer, and so, and to also donate. And I do just want to exercise, I don't want to exercise caution, but I do just want us to also consider the fact that, I think it's 100% amazing that we're donating to Second Harvest Food Bank, and there are also folks who are saying, you know, like, Holy Cross has their food pantry program, they're struggling. We heard from Grey Bears earlier, we know that they're struggling. We know that other food donation programs are struggling as well because of the lack of federal funding that they've been able to receive. And so I really hope there's going to be some way for some of those other organizations to work with Second Harvest Food Bank, so we can make sure that we're having food equally distributed throughout the county. But I think it really is critical that, similar to other emergencies that we have, that we have a local food emergency resource page on the county's website, which would include resources for food access, locations for food donations, locations for food distribution, ways that people can donate financially and volunteer opportunities, so that we can engage all the members of our community who really want to help with this effort. But I think that this is a really great first step that we're making to working with Second Harvest Food Bank, and supporting Second Harvest Food Bank, and supporting the food, most importantly, it's supporting the food access needs for people in our community. I did also want to just acknowledge and recommend that the, when we have a letter that comes from the board, I think it's under number three, it says, "Direct staff to inform the county, state, and federal delegations of board actions." I think it's really important that that letter come from the chair on behalf of the board, and that we, you know, have staff engaging and working with our state and federal delegations. But I do think that the action that we're sending today is really a reflection of the board and coming from the board. And with that, I don't think I have any further comments, but just really hope that we don't have to spend down all this money, that we do have, you know, SNAP benefits kicking back in for folks, but, you know, I think we're in this for the long haul. I actually did want to mention one more thing, I think, in response to Mrs. Steinbruner's comments, you know, we do have our holiday Second Harvest Food Bank drive that's happening right now, and I think many of us, we have, there's a competition across jurisdictions to see who can raise the most money. And I think, given what we're seeing right now, it really puts us in a position where we should be trying to do what we can to raise money and have the county be, you know, the highest donor this year. I know that there's sometimes competitions between jurisdictions where jurisdiction loses, they might have to jump off the wharf, and so I don't like cold water, and so I'm hoping that we can use this opportunity for us to, to get out in the front and, and get the most donations during this holiday season. So that concludes my comments. Just want to thank you again for bringing this forward on behalf of the board.
Thank you. I certainly won't be jumping off no wharf. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you. Let me just start off by thanking our CEO, OR3, Second Harvest, and all of the partners for working together to coordinate this response to the loss in SNAP benefits for our community members. I appreciate the creativity in identifying a funding source. This $500,000 is This $500,000 is coming from a reduction of our supplies and services budget rather than tapping into our reserves, which may be needed for future emergencies. So I really appreciate finding that funding within our budget. And I just want to say that this, this item, as well as, you know, some previous items that have come before our board recently, really demonstrate the value of community partnerships coming together very swiftly in response to what's happening to try to fill the need of basic needs and reduction of services that we're seeing immediately. So I really appreciate that. I do want to talk a little bit more about what declaring a local emergency could mean in terms of practical impacts for our residents. I know that in past emergencies, things like tenant protections from evictions have been a part of it. And when I think about the choices that our residents might have to make immediately, right? They, cash is tight, they're used to receiving CalFresh benefits to fill their refrigerator and food pantry for their families, they're not able to, and they're going to have to make choices about paying rent or paying for food for their families. What does it mean when we declare a local emergency as is presented?
So Dave Reed, OR3, there's a couple of things. Actually, the following item in today's agenda speaks to a little bit of it. But yes, so by declaring the local emergency, we will have some tenant protections in place for 30 days so we can work, OR3 can work in collaboration with county council and other state and local agencies to ensure that we are protecting folks from evictions during the period with which we keep this local emergency active. And then it also affords us the ability to access some of our disaster service workers to support, as has been mentioned, volunteer needs to help distribute and prepare food for distribution so we can access some of our disaster service workers in supporting some of those efforts as well.
And so given that special provision, what is the length that we expect for this local emergency? What is the process for ending the emergency?
I can assist with that. The local emergency lasts until the board revokes it, basically, so there's no end date on it. The protections for evictions and for price gouging, those last for 30 days from the date your board declares. However, the CEO has been delegated as someone who can re-up that every 30 days. And we did that a number of times during, after the CZU fires, for example. We think we did it for about a year or so after the CZU fires.
Right. So I think that in the additional direction that Supervisor Cummings is presenting about the county website, I think it would be helpful to include the information about tenant protections on there so that way our local residents are aware that they may be protected in the event that they're not able to pay their rent when they can't access their food resources and funding. Another question for Second Harvest. So again, thank you so much for your coordination and your leadership. It's great to have you today. Just can you help us and the public here? What's needed today? How are your food supplies? Are you seeking volunteers? How can folks help?
Well, thank you so much. First of all, as has been stated, I want to thank CEO Coburn for being super responsive to this unprecedented moment for any community across our country. So know that Santa Cruz County is not alone. I speak to so many of my colleagues across the nation, some who are fortunate to work with leaders that are people-centered, others that are hoping that some magical money will come down from federal and state sources, and it's just not happening. And so really, every community is stepping up to fend for itself. And that's really the nature of what's happening across our nation right now. And you see it in the news. You see Santa Clara County just gave 4.5 million to their food bank. You see that San Francisco is going to be doing gift cards. Everyone's trying to figure out how do we work together locally? So I just want to set the tone for what's happening. There is no playbook for this. No food bank, who by the way, and I know I was here before, Grey Bears, Loews &amp; Fishes, 65 organizations are contracted with us. We distribute 13 million pounds of food a year. It was much higher during FEMA or during COVID because we had FEMA resources, right? Those resources aren't coming for this. And it's a $6.5 million benefit delta that is not coming to households. No food bank is designed to be the only purveyor of food support for any community. Food banks have always been your second line of defense. But how are we working? Well, we're working very strategically with all these partners, some of them who were mentioned today, right? And we are being very rational in our conversations with everyone and reminding everyone that while we see our community, like the county and the cities and our local philanthropy stepping up, it is not going to equate to the $6.5 million food that people are used to accessing. And so we will need to be careful and strategic to use data. We do have and are working closely with our county leaders at Human Resources Agency. We know where CalFresh recipients live. We know their SIP codes. We are going to be distributing food to our partners based on data because we know we want people to, we are clearly being impacted by this, to have access within their neighborhoods, to go to one of our access points through our partners and access food. In addition to that, we are working with the county to provide two emergency distributions this month, one at each one of your county facilities where people go to ask questions about their benefits and enroll. We know there's going to be a lot of people going to these offices, wondering why their card's not working. And many people will find out about what's happening in that way. They go to the store, they didn't know that there wasn't any money in their card, they're going to find out that way. And they're going to go to the county and they're going to say, what happened? Right? I also just want to bring a human element to, oh, let me keep answering the question, what else are we doing? In addition to these two sites, we will be working with the Office of Emergency Services to help us distribute food, think à la COVID. We were at the boardwalk, we were at the fairgrounds. And then we will work with the department to make sure that all CalFresh recipients receive a message that we will be available for them, especially the week before Thanksgiving, right? We are amping up our volunteer opportunities at the food bank because what happens, think of the thousands and thousands of pounds of food being delivered every week to all these sites. The food has to be packaged so that it goes to these sites ready to be hand-delivered to people that are showing up, right? We need volunteers. And so if you go onto our website, you're going to see afternoon and Saturday slots that we're looking for. We need hands. We have had conversations with some of our participants about using the National Guard. We've heard loud and clear from our participants that they wouldn't necessarily feel safe seeing people in uniform at their food bank. So this is why we're asking our community to step up and help us. We want to make sure we don't, not adding to the anxiety to some of our community members. And then lastly, I'll just say that one of our top priorities of concern is our unhoused community. Making sure that our unhoused community knows where to go for food. And we know that they have the traditional places where they go, and some folks have received benefits and they go to the store and they, they receive benefits that way and don't avail themselves, right, of the services we provide. I want to share with you that my staff is committed and doing the best they can, but I also want to be very transparent with you. The phone calls that we're getting in our hotline from people that are being affected that have never sought services from the food bank are heart-wrenching. Staff is dealing with heightened levels of anger and frustration. Staff is dealing with parents asking them how they're going to make ends meet without the dollars that they depend on for food. This is real. This is happening to our neighbors and we're going to do the best we can. But this is a moment for our community to do exactly what we're doing today, which is standing shoulder to shoulder and doing what we can. And yes, the Holiday Food and Fun Drive is yet another opportunity for our community to engage. One thing that gives me so much pride this morning, as I was thinking about this meeting, there are counties that are choosing to not act. You're acting. The city of Watsonville will be acting. The city of Santa Cruz will be acting. And I think right now, if anything, we need character and we need to do what's right, you know? The basic principles that we all were raised to believe in. So when hearing the stories of the people that are being impacted and then watching our local government stand up at this moment, gives me immense pride, knowing that there are communities that are not as lucky as the people that get to call Santa Cruz County home. You should feel very, very proud of yourselves and your leadership. This is the most important time for families. This is Thanksgiving and we're coming into the holidays. And you need to know that our food bank is preparing for the duration of this calendar year. And your contribution's going to be super, super helpful, and we're asking the community to step up even more so because you're talking about a $13 million potential delta between two months. No community can fill that gap, but we're going to do the best we can. If you go onto our website, you will find the Find Food map, all of the locations for where people can go. We've been circulating that flyer, I think I sent it to most of you electronically. That shows the map. People put in their address, they know what the closest distribution site is at. Equally, if you want to go donate food, there is a barrel availability map. One of the things that I'm going to be asking David to see if we can coordinate is to get barrels to all of our local law enforcement offices across the county so that we can solicit food. We're not big on soliciting food historically because it costs the food bank a lot of money to inventorize, organize, and then distribute the food. There's a lot of staffing power that happens there and it's costly. But we're in a situation with even your donations, we need volumes of food, right? And there's specific kind of food we're asking for, shelf-stable food. Our website has the list of items that we're looking for. So to your question, Supervisor Cummings, we want to lean on our law enforcement offices, fire departments, police departments, so that they can become places where people can go donate some of those shelf-stable food. I'm happy to entertain any additional questions. Again, please know we're coordinating with over 65 organizations that we are lucky to call partner agencies. We are meeting weekly and being responsive as we're learning what we're seeing every week because this will be the first week that we will see massive turnout. Last week, our hotline signed an increase of 40% calls. And so we know to anticipate a wave of people needing food. And of course, you all have my cell phone, so if you, any one of you has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you're doing. It's clear that you're meeting an incredible need, and I appreciate your coordination with all the various organizations that are helping to distribute food. I'll be holding a meeting at the end of this week with the organizations who are distributing food in the San Lorenzo Valley and in Scotts Valley. And I really encourage all my colleagues on the board to, you know, kind of help with that coordination, help to share information, and do what we do best, which is to partner. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Koenig.
Well, yeah, I also just want to express my immense appreciation for staff and all our community partners who have created this opportunity for action and brought it to us so quickly so that we can get it out the door and into, onto families' tables and into their bellies. I suppose we don't, there's so much uncertainty right now, but I mean, a $13 million delta over two months, do we have any sense that that will like be fully expended or available if the government does reopen, when it does reopen eventually? I mean, that was ultimately budgeted for, right?
I can speak to that a little bit. So as CEO Coburn mentioned earlier, there's been a court order that SNAP benefits be released, at least partially released. And just earlier this morning, we were receiving information regarding how that, how that breakdown was intended to be distributed among two clients. And the methodology that was chosen by the federal government was one which was going to be a little bit more complicated to get out directly to people who need the benefits. And it was going to take a few weeks, was, that was what was expected. And then just sitting in this meeting, we've seen the news that the president has said there will be no issuance until after the shutdown ends. So I think it's a bit uncertain what, what the actual reality will be. We have previously been told by USDA that once the shutdown ends, all benefits will be issued in full. So presumably, if we're able to get partial issuances out, whether it's one, three weeks from now, hopefully it's not really delayed until the federal government reopens, then once the federal government does open, we'd be able to issue the remaining benefits. So in a sense, it still does answer the question about what will be the gap, when will people have money on their cards? But I'll remain hopeful that we're able, we actually will be able to at least issue partial benefits sometime this month, but it is to be determined.
Thank you. And I also want to thank CEO Coburn for putting together a solution here that is paid for with belt tightening rather than digging into our reserves further since I'm sure we're going to need them. Thanks.
Supervisor DeSerpah.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today, Erica. This is very helpful. I'm in complete support of this. I just have, just a couple of questions. You know, there's other services on the table like WIC, which I believe has funding through the month of November, but then ends at the last day. And that's another service for families that have babies and young children to supplement their, their need for food. So there's that program, and then there's Meals on Wheels that comes later. So I think I heard you say that we're trying to target SNAP participants, but how are, how are we doing that other than sending them a text message?
I think it might be you. And then... Thank you Supervisor DeSerpah. So I can speak to that a bit. SNAP recipients have been receiving various messaging regarding the situation directly from the state as well as from us as the county department administering SNAP benefits. Some of the ways that we've been communicating directly with clients is through, on our phone system, we have a recorded message informing them of what the current situation is. They've also received direct mailings. We're also doing social media postings, and we've been pretty available to other, you know, media outlets that have reached out to us. And then, and then additionally, as you, as you just alluded to, we have text messaging available, which in the past has been a pretty effective form of communication, as most of us always have our, our phones available. The final other methods of communication has been through our partners that we know many of our clients work with, you know, directly through Second Harvest Food Bank, of course. And we have monthly meetings with a number of community organizations that work with some of our shared clients. And so the message is getting out, out as widely as possible. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. And so the SNAP benefits are typically about $6.5 million a month that go out into the community through people's ability to buy food. There's going to be some dire economic consequences for agriculture, for our, our stores and et cetera, et cetera, also.
The ripple, the ripple effect of this will, especially if prolonged, will be felt by many of our retailers who open up their businesses to welcome the foot traffic that comes with CalFresh recipients. So sure.
So sure, there's been, Feeding America has been, which is our national sister organization, has been advocating to Congress not just the impact to those who are in need of this benefit, but clearly the impacts that it will oppose to our local economies and our farmers, for sure.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second. I do have some additional directions I'd like to include as well.
No, I think it's, I think I'm turning everybody's mic off right now. I think we are going to have to do a sort of a focused effort on try to get folks that are losing benefits, SNAP participants. I don't know how that can be done. If it's just specifically folks that were eligible for SNAP that are going to be contacted during this time by text message or specific dates that are set up for folks that are losing benefits, that get mailed to them in snail mail type of mail. But I think, yeah, that is going to be important because we can open it up to everybody else later in time. But I think the important thing is reaching those people that are losing benefits.
Did you have additional comments?
Yeah, additional comments and a little bit of additional directions based on the conversation. Wanted to see if this was a friendly amendment would be okay with the maker of the motion that under three, and then just saying direct staff, direct staff and the chair to send a letter to the county's state and federal delegation on the board's actions. And then in addition to the recommended action that the county provide not only information about food, resources, location for food donations, financial donations and volunteer opportunities, but also to include information about renters' rights and assistance and any other relevant information as it pertains to the emergency. And I think that's going to also get some like, you know, price gouging issues and things like that that might come up. And the last thing I wanted to see if the board might be willing to consider, which is very untraditional, is that we send an alert out through Cruisaware. I know we usually use it for disaster emergencies, but this is an emergency within our community. And the fact that it's another way for us to get information out for people who maybe they're not on benefits, but they want to help. I think this could be an opportunity for us to use that system. But I wanted to ask that question of our three director prior to having that incorporated into the motion.
So is your additional direction that you'd like to use Cruisaware to point them to donating to the food bank? Or is it just to make people aware of the disaster? What would you?
I think it would be making people aware of us declaring a local emergency and where they can go to get more information about access to food resources, volunteer opportunities, donations, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. So I'd like to incorporate that as a package of friendly amendments.
I'll accept that.
So Madam Clerk, we do have.
Before you make a motion or take the vote, I'll just add, I was hearing from some county executives that they've been trying to target if they're using their systems like our Cruisaware to actually target the SNAP recipients. So maybe this is a question for HSD. If we have access to the telephone numbers of our SNAP recipients, could we send a more targeted alert? Because I'm a little bit worried that if we alert the whole county, I don't want to use all the food on the people who might not need the food. So that's just kind of a refinement that maybe staff, we can look into as staff.
For the HSD clients, I would say we could message them directly through our systems. We have privacy rules we have to follow, so we couldn't necessarily share that for Cruisware. Though I understood the desire for the message to be more about options for donating. So I don't know if that will make a difference. But for our clients specifically, I would say we use HSD systems, which we do have access to. And we could incorporate other messages or otherwise very specifically targeted to CalFresh beneficiaries for HSD, CalFresh beneficiaries, food distribution information and the resource page that was referenced.
So Supervisor Cummings, what I would recommend is that we look into doing a cruise alert for the general emergency and information and where to find information and then message to the SNAP recipients in another way about where they can go to for food.
I'll incorporate that.
Okay.
As long as the maker of the motion is okay with it.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you. Before we take the vote, I just want to say that I want to thank all the county staff, my colleagues here on the board. Every time we face these things with, you know, whether it's the threat of ice, it's a head start or, you know, these things that we're dealing with now with food insecurity, that we always deal with it with a sense of compassion and thoughtfulness. So thank you for all the hard work behind it too as well. Madam Clerk, if we could take the vote now?
Supervisor DeSerpah?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Chair, if I may, we've received information from multiple sources that the quality of the audio has deteriorated again significantly. Our information services team has located a potential solution. May we take a five-minute recess to attempt that solution?
We are going to take a lunch break right now and convene back at 1:30 for closed session.
Wonderful, thank you.
Wait, that's wrong. Yes, 1:30.
And I just want to note, I anticipate there may be a reportable action at a closed session.
Did that issue get resolved with the sound? I guess not. The echo.
Once you open, I just need to report out. Once you open the meeting, I just need to report out.
Okay, do we have anything reportable for closed session?
Yes, one thing to report out is the Board of the Freedom County Sanitation District, your Board approved the filing of litigation against one party. More details about that will be made available after the litigation is filed and the parties have been served.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number 10. Consider approving the concept and ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of County of Santa Cruz amending Santa Cruz County Emergency Services Section 2.26.020 and 2.26.030 and 2.26.040 and 2.26.0.050 and 2.26.060 and 2.26.110. And take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Amanda Gollings, Emergency Services Analyst, and David Reed, Director of Office of Response, Recovery and Resilience for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Hernandez and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. My name is Amanda Gollings and I'm an Emergency Services Analyst. And I am here with Director Reed of the Office of Response, Recovery and Resilience, also known as OR3. I'm here to introduce the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 2.26 of the Santa Cruz County Code, which governs our county's emergency services framework. The intent of these amendments is to modernize and strengthen the county's emergency management structure so that aligns with current state and federal standards, reflects best practices and supports our recently adopted emergency operations plan. Our existing code has served us well, but doesn't reflect our current emergency management organization. This update ensures that Santa Cruz County is ready to respond to effectively to any disaster we may face, from wildfires and floods to public health emergencies. These proposed revisions fall into the following categories. One, updated definitions. The language throughout Chapter 2.26 has been modernized to match current emergency management terminology used by the State of California and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Two, clarified roles and responsibilities. The amendments clearly define the powers and duties of both the Director of Emergency Services, typically held by the county executive officer, and the Director of Emergency Management within OR3. Provisions have been added for secession of authority, ensuring seamless leadership and decision-making continuity during emergencies. Three, updated public health and safety provisions. The revised code gives the county additional tools to abate public nuisances that pose a threat to health and safety during emergencies. And four, operational consistency and coordination. The new structure ensures that all emergency response operations follow the National Incident Management System and standardized emergency management system frameworks, promoting seamless coordination between county departments and with our local, state and federal partners. Together, these updates create a more resilient, transparent and operationally sound emergency management organization. They strengthen our ability to coordinate effectively, protect public health and safety and serve our community when it matters most. Importantly, there is no fiscal impact associated with this ordinance. Today's staff has recommended to the Board that you approve in concept the ordinance amending Chapter 2.26, schedule the second reading and final adoption for November 18, 2025, and direct the Clerk of the Board to publish the required public notice. In closing, this update reflects the county's ongoing commitment to ensuring that our emergency management framework is effective, equitable and responsive, both today and for the future challenges ahead. Thank you for your time and attention and I'm happy to answer any questions the Board might have.
We'll take it out to the public first to see if anybody would like to address us on this item. Made it back.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. I have a concern about the county's readiness to respond to a battery energy storage fire smoke plume. It was evident that the county did not know what to do when it happened just across the bay at Moss Landing. And I want to know that these changes will indeed make future responses seamless, even if there are disasters that happen in neighboring counties but do affect us. What is the procedure for working with collaboratively the other counties when something happens there, but it affects us? The smoke plume from the Moss Landing fire did affect us. And I was very disappointed to see that this county basically said, "That happened in Monterey." And people in Santa Cruz County were adversely affected. So I want to know how that would be different in the event of another fire at Moss Landing or if there is lithium battery technology that catches fire in Santa Cruz County in the future?
Anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring it back to the Board.
I'll move to recommended actions.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor DeSerpah. Can we take roll call?
Supervisor DeSerpah?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have item 10.1, which was 31. Was that Supervisor?
This guy.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. This is the appointment to CSAC. It's been an honor and a pleasure to be our Board's representative on the California State Association of Counties for the last couple of years. And I appreciate the nomination again this year or for the next year. However, I do feel that it is a rather demanding appointment and I need to spend a little bit more time with my family. And so I would like to give up the position and nominate one of you instead or support one of your nominations. You know, I'll be honest, when thinking about this, as far as which of us is the best prepared to do this work or best suited, I did think of Supervisor Cummings because he's been so proactive in terms of following state bills and, you know, making sure that we have a prepared county statement on those. And of course, your time on the Coastal Commission also prepared you well for, you know, the grueling road warrior life. But I think that any one of you would be well-suited and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
I can't do the chair. I'd be happy to serve as CSAC rep. Yeah, my office is following a lot of the state legislation with the county moving forward with the offshore oil drilling and deep sea mining prevention activities and coordinating across our partners at the state. I think this will also give us a really good opportunity to have better engagement with folks at CSAC and getting them to get on board and getting other counties to get on board. And through my previous travels, being on the Coastal Commission, I don't see that being as a barrier for me to be able to go to Sacramento on a regular basis and to really be proactive at helping to advance and amplify the county's needs and also trying to make sure that Santa Cruz County has a voice in Sacramento as well. And so I might be happy to take on that role.
Quick question for Supervisor Koenig. This would be effective for this coming conference already, correct?
I think this appointment is for the upcoming December 1, 2025, for the upcoming calendar year. So it's for a year from December 1 to November 30.
Okay, so yes, effectively.
I have a question, quick question. If I remember correctly, you were nominated, right, at the last CSAC conference by Luis Alejo. So is that whole nomination process?
Right, so what you're referring?
I'm going to hear though first.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I have served on the Executive Committee of CSAC for the last year and was nominated by Luis Alejo for that. You're right. And I think that's partially the reason it's best that we do this now because then I think it's totally feasible that whoever replaces me could also, if interested, serve on the Executive Committee. There is another election process within CSAC at the December conference.
Thank you for the clarification.
I don't know if that was a nomination, but I will nominate Supervisor Cummings and I'll remain as the vice or the alternate if you need me. Oh, that's right. Anyone in the public wish you to address us on this item? Anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
Okay, so I need a second for my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. There it is. Madam Clerk, will you take roll call?
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
DeSerpah?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you all for your support.
More on your plate now. Now we have item 10.2. Now we have item 10.2, which was number 39.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the, to approve a new multi-year contract to Community Foundation for $900,000 for the opioid settlement funds. I see that Marnie Sandoval, Dr. Sandoval is here and has waited patiently to address this item. So I do have a couple of questions if you don't mind coming up. And we did, while you're coming up, I mean, part of my thinking behind this, we heard from Councilmember Susie O'Hara during public comment. And actually Supervisor Ryan Coonerty, now working in Matt Mahan's office, organized a couple of weeks ago a conference for Santa Clara County Mayors. And we talked about best practices in treating addiction. And these opioid settlement funds are sort of some of the only, they're not completely discretionary, but flexible funding we have to do that. And so we were, it's very energizing. I'd be happy to share more about that with you all at another point. But I think it's a conversation worth having. And so as far as these funds, I did get a chance to actually see that there's, well, what is it, the Steering Committee for the opioid settlement funds? There's actually quite a bit of organization happening about ensuring that these funds are adequately invested. And it is a significant amount of funding. What is it, $29 million over 16 years?
26, 26 million.
So I guess that's my first question is, so this is $900,000 over two years?
Correct, yes. So what you're looking at with this particular board item is specific to a set of dollars that have been purposely set aside to allow community nonprofit organizations to apply for grant funding. to apply for grant funding in the substance use prevention and intervention space. And so the Community Foundation is really administering that grant application and oversight process and supporting the department. So it's just 900,000 out of our large budget. And so we do have a 9% allocation of our total budget towards personnel activities. 74% of the full budget is going towards contracts and grants, which this 900,000 is just a small piece of that. And then an additional remaining 17% goes to all prevention efforts.
Okay, and I know sort of within all that, there's another internal grant program for $350,000. Is that per year? And that's for county departments to apply for in order to offer or improve services related to?
Yes, that's a one-time grant funding opportunity that we have set aside specifically for departmental opportunities within county systems. And again, that falls into that contracts and grants component of the funding that we've set aside.
Okay, and so is the other, what's the status of the other funding outside of this contract with the Community Foundation? Is it all spoken for for the next 10 years? Is it, I mean, how?
No, and that's the beauty of the planning process. So we have the budget for this current year, has been approved by the Board for our opioid settlement funds. So that's really the component that's strictly been approved. We do have our MOU with the cities where we engage with them, with our city representation to help inform what might be changing needs. But we also do have a pretty robust community engagement process that is part of all this planning that's ongoing. And so, you know, there's community and provider forums that happen, there's surveys that go out, the most recent that was just completed in October, to continually gather input from both the community and providers about what are the needs, how are the services that we're providing, meeting those needs? How do we need to think about the remaining funds and how we allocate them? So there's opportunity ongoing in all of these spaces, including, you know, with our city governments, to really talk about what are local needs and how do we make sure that we're utilizing these funds in a way to meet those local needs. So we certainly have opportunity to take further input as we're developing the full budget that will come to you in the next budget process.
Okay, so is that the next engagement point then during the budget hearings? If not, what is?
Well, technically, any city officials could reach out to our department at any time, and we could have conversations. I, you know, welcome that. I think that's very important that we're hearing about that. We're constantly in communication with our providers as well. In March will be the next annual gathering to take input from all of our sheriffs, law enforcement, and city officials, but we don't have to wait till then if there's something that's come up in any jurisdiction.
Okay, is, are there funds that have not been allocated?
Outside of this particular item that's before you, yes.
Okay, great. That's all reassuring. And with the $350,000, the internal grants, what kind of, did we see robust engagement from county departments? You know, what, how many? Because I think the application deadline was October 3rd or something.
Yes, the application deadline has come and gone. We're in the process of fully reviewing all the applicants, so we haven't made decisions yet, but what I can tell you is that we had four departments that did apply. And so we're in the process of reviewing those applications and how they meet the application requirements and looking at how they fit with our goals for our opioid settlement funds, focus areas that have been agreed upon in the plan. So we hope to have some final awards, hopefully by the end of the month.
Okay, great. As far as metrics go, I mean, obviously, the reason we're working with the Community Foundation is because this is what they do, right, as far as giving out grants to community organizations, and they're really good at it. And, I mean, when I reached out to Executive Director True, you know, asking for what data they had as far as the success of these grant recipients at organizations, I mean, they definitely have robust data as far as the services being delivered and some of the impacts. What wasn't clear to me, though, is what we're kind of measuring across all programs, like what are the universal metrics for success that we're looking at? You know, it was clear, looking at all the different programs, that stuff was happening, but then how does it move the needle as far as, you know, maybe overall opioid deaths or, you know, people accessing addiction services or, you know, some of those larger metrics? Do we have those? It sounds like we do.
We do have quite a bit of robust data with what has been happening over the last couple of years. We could certainly put together a more detailed presentation. I mean, we'd be happy to meet with you, or if the Board is interested in that presentation, we could definitely put that together and give you all a better overview of what has been happening with the entirety of our opioid settlement funds and the kind of impact that we're having.
Okay, yeah. I mean, given that, that's really helpful. Thanks. Given this is not the only funding available, I mean, I think I'm satisfied letting this move forward today. And then it sounds like March is a good time, and so if we got some kind of report and update on this entire effort before March, including some of those universal metrics, and, you know, conversations that have been ongoing with various partners, including the cities, that would be great.
So we'll open it up to the public, see if anyone would like to address us on this item?
Becky Steinbruner, resident of rural Aptos. Supervisor Koenig, thank you for pulling this, because I have had for many years a real question about Community Foundation managing public money for the county. It doesn't seem right to me. In the past, I have tried to determine on my own how those monies are being spent, and I've always been told the Community Foundation workings is not open to the public, their board meetings are not open to the public, and my Public Records Act requests could not be honored because they are a private foundation. So to me, this is adding a layer of clouds to this money. And I want to understand, why can't the county manage its own grant money? Why can't our county people, being paid to do this kind of work, manage our own grant or this money? It's a lot. I did a bit of math and check me on it, but that would work out to about $1.4 million a year over 18 years. Where is this number of 900,000 a year coming up? It's not the full amount. I've just heard that there will be a one-time grant internal of 350,000. So is that to be included every year? Is that 350,000 internal grant for county operations of this service going to be every year? It's not clear. The other thing that bothers me is, under the prioritization of organizations, there's no mention of veterans as a priority. That should change. They should be at the top of the list. And I'm out of time, but I would appreciate answers to the questions that I have raised here before you now. Thank you again for pulling the item.
Is there anyone online wishing to address us?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
Okay. Would our CEO want to answer about the capacity of us administering the money?
Connie wasn't able to be here today, but she is looking at that. So that's one thing. It was too late to make any sort of adjustment right now because of our relationship with the Community Foundation, but she's going to be looking at and figuring out whether it makes sense to bring administration of that in-house.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we move to move the recommended actions with additional direction for staff to return with a report no later than March 2026 with information about how we're measuring the impact of opioids in our community and that describes the internal grants made to county departments, and requesting that the DA provide information on lessons learned from the PAC, the Partnership for Accountability, Connection, and Treatment Program, and any opportunities to reimagine that program based on best practices for treating addiction.
We have a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor De Serafa?
I think the second was from Supervisor Cummings. But I would like to just add an amendment, if I could. I would like to also, if a report, if and when the report comes back, I would like to hear from our sheriff coroner about deaths due to opioids in our county. And also, I don't know if we keep the overdose data as well, but I would like to hear more about that.
Yeah, happy to include that in the motion.
Okay, we have an amendment to add, a report from the sheriffs about fatalities and overdoses.
Let me ask one quick question. I remember in prior years, I don't know if this was at the mid-year budget, we're doing budget hearings, would get those numbers in terms of number of deaths, overdoses? And so I'm just wondering in terms of timing, because I think our mid-year budget is February, if that's correct? And we generally would have some of this information come back then. So, I mean, if it could come back during mid-year budget, I think that's a good thing to aim for. If not, I think the March date's fine. But just, there've been times in the past where we get this information. I know Supervisor De Serafa earlier this year, when she got on board, when she got on the Board, an issue came up around the opioid settlements and what happens with that money. And so I think since we haven't had that come back, having it come back makes sense in the form of a report. But, yeah, just, you know, if there's flexibility around the timing, so on or before, like the first meeting in March or on or before the second meeting in March, maybe that'll provide flexibility in case they want to bring this information forward during the mid-year budget.
Yeah, I think some flexibility would be great, on or before the second meeting. We did have a mid-year report on it. You might recall, we added an investigator at the height of our desk in overdoses in the coroner's office. I do understand the numbers are down related to opioid deaths, so, but we're happy to provide an update mid-year before the end of March.
I think there was that hotspot map that was red and a color map that had all the hotspots throughout the county, and it shows all the numbers. Remember that one? That would be good during the budget time. All right, we have a motion.
Happy to clarify that it's on or before the second meeting in March 2026.
So we have a motion and a second and friendly amendment, if we could take a roll call vote?
Thank you, yes. And to clarify for the record, I have recorded the mover as Supervisor Koenig, seconded by Supervisor Cummings.
Yes.
Supervisor De Serafa?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And that concludes our meeting. We'll now adjourn. Next meeting will be the regular agenda for Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors is scheduled for Tuesday, November 18 at 9:00 a.m. at the basement of the Government Center.